Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city administrator to please take the role of call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, you're here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casrog?
Here.
Maladra?
Alderman Maladra? Just keep going.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
And let the record show Alderman Marx is, I mean, Maladra is here. We heard him just a minute ago, so I'll see.
Try that again. Alderman Maladra, can you hear us, sir? He's ignoring us. I'm supposed to shoot him a text and... Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's meeting is being conducted semi-virtually in compliance with the governor's executive order, limiting in-person gatherings to the lesser of 50 people or 50% of room capacity under Phase Four. For the City of Geneva Council Chamber, this provides for a maximum of 29 individuals who may attend in person. As such, you will note that the Aldermen are attending virtually and in person. Staff members are also participating virtually and in person. As a requirement of the Open Meetings Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. This meeting may be viewed livestream on YouTube or the public access channels on AT&amp;T, Channel 99, Comcast, Channel 10, Metronet, Channel 93, or by accessing the meeting directly through the link provided on this evening's agenda. In addition, public comments may be submitted anytime during the meeting to publiccomment@genova-il.us. Please note, written comments received during the meeting will be acknowledged at the appropriate time and placed into the record of the meeting but will not be read aloud during the meeting. Those wishing to comment through the virtual platform will be recognized at the appropriate time on the agenda. Any questions from the committee members? Our agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is straightforward. It is to receive an overview of the City of Geneva's electric operations, existing energy portfolio, and energy contracts for the City of Geneva. I have stated before, and it's worth stating again tonight, while we are taking stock of our operations and our portfolios, we are not taking action this evening in any way, shape, or form. This is an opportunity to edify not only the elected officials but the community as well with respect to the operations of our city's energy operations. With that, I'd like to invite our Director of Public Works, Mr. Babica, to the podium. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir. Members of the community. Tonight, both myself and Electric Operations Manager Aaron Holden will be here tonight to give you a brief overview of the city's electrical utility infrastructure and operations. And Electrical Superintendent Hal Wright is available online virtually. This will be a multi-speaker event, myself and Aaron.
You adjust that microphone a little bit, Rich. There you go. Thank you.
Both myself and Manager Holden will be doing the presentation in person. And as I've said, Superintendent Wright is available online. At this time, I am going to ask Manager Holden to come forward, and he will begin the presentations.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's worth noting that the gentleman approaching the podium has been introduced as the manager of Electric Operations. This Friday, May the 14th, at 3:30 PM, he will be the interim superintendent of Electric Operations. The gentleman on the phone, Hal Wright, who now calls Tennessee Home, has been our superintendent of Electric Operations. And this Friday at 3:30 PM, Mr. Wright retires from the City of Geneva after 34 years of service. Also joining Hal in retirement is a lady we all know because we all received the emails from her regularly, Diane Krupa, retired from the City of Geneva after 22 years of service. So to both Hal and Diane, an extraordinary combination of time and talent in service to all of us. So we thank them, of course, and we certainly appreciate Hal being with us this evening from his new home in Tennessee. So with that, soon-to-be interim superintendent, Mr. Aaron, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I'm just going to give a brief overview of our operations and our energy portfolio before I turn this back over to Rich.
Mr. Holden, I'm going to invite you, if you'd like, to drop your gator.
Gator?
There we go. That's great.
All right. Thank you. If I could get the next slide, please? So we're going to start out here with the Electric Division mission statement. I believe you've all probably seen this in presentations past, but good reminder. So we're here for serving the community with reliable power at the lowest possible price. And that drives pretty much everything we do within the Electric Division. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a overview of the expenditures for fiscal year '22. This is budget numbers, so these are projections. As you can see, the largest chunk there is contractual services. That is another word for basically our power contracts. So 58% of how much, the 51 million, is for purchased power. Capital outlay is the second biggest. Keep in mind there that there's roughly $12 million in that amount that is earmarked for the southeast development. If that were to go ahead this year, we do have money budgeted for it. So if you take that 12% out of that capital outlay, the contractual services amount doesn't really change, and we get a bigger piece of the pie just for power purchases. And then, of course, you can see the other smaller slices there. Next slide, please. Okay, so our customer composition here in Geneva. So we have a pretty good mix. Residential, commercial. Commercial would be Third Street, State Street, Randall Road, those type of businesses. And then, of course, our industrial base, which is 63, but they take up nearly 52 change percent of the energy that we sell every year. So industrial would be Johnson Controls, Burgess Norton, Power Packaging, those type of businesses. Add them all up, we come up with 10,268 customers. Next slide, please. So here are our top 10 customers. These are in kilowatt-hours. This was for fiscal year '21. Johnson Controls lead the pack at 39 million kilowatt-hours of energy usage, Burgess Norton at 29, and so forth. So you'll notice that Delnor's in there, along with Power Packaging, Millard. So we have a pretty good mix of both manufacturing, food preparation and storage, and healthcare there in our customer base. Next slide, please. Okay, so here, power supply. So here's how we break down. Here is an overview of our energy portfolio. NIPA at 306 gigawatt-hours, roughly 79%. NIPA is what we're all here discussing tonight. That would be Prairie State. Nextera is a 5-by-16 contract that we have purchased as a hedge. 5-by-16 means five days a week, basically Monday through Friday, 16 hours a day. We have a contract to purchase energy. WMRE, that is the landfill generator at the old Settlers Hill. They cap the landfill, capture the methane, and they burn it off through two turbines. And that equates about 8.5% of our energy generation for the year. And then finally, last but not least, is GGF. So those of you that are not familiar, the city does own a natural gas-fired generation facility, roughly 30 megawatts. It's located out on the east side of town. This mix has allowed us to keep rates stable. I believe the last rate increase was in 2012. We don't anticipate one at the current portfolio anytime soon. One thing to note, that the costs coming out of NIPA have actually been decreasing over the last few years, indicating that the coal plant is running well. Next slide, please. So this is kind of what it all looks like in a graph form. This is from July of 2019. So this kind of shows our contractual resources. You'll notice there's kind of a baseline there at about 35 megawatts. That is our Prairie State or NIPA obligation. So we get 35 megawatts day in, day out, 24 hours a day, out of Prairie State. The piano-key looking bumps there is actually our 5-by-16 contract from Nextera. You can see on the fourth, there's no bump. That's because we don't buy 5-by-16 power on the holidays because we don't need it. One thing to note, this is looking at July. We purchase about 30 megawatts through the, per day, through the Nextera contract. That contract is structured such that we don't buy as much power in the lower usage months as we do the higher usage months. So if you looked at this graph in the spring or fall, those little bumps would be much lower on that graph. However, the 35 megawatts from Prairie State is always there. Next slide, please. So this is what it looks like if you overlay our real-time load on that same graph we saw previously. The red line is the actual load from City of Geneva throughout the day. Anytime that the red line is below the blue line, we have an excess of energy, and we are selling that energy back on the market through PJM. Anytime it's above that blue line, we're purchasing energy on the spot market through PJM to meet our load obligations. It's interesting to note, you can see kind of the U-shaped curves on some days and the spikes on others. When you see that U-shaped curve, that is when we're running GGF. So on those days, either the energy was above the price to run the plant, or we were trying to do a peak shave to save ourselves on our coincidental peak charges for the next year. Next slide, please. This is kind of a different way to look at that same graph. So this is our load duration curve. At the bottom there across, you can see that that's the NIPA contract, Prairie State, for about 307 gigawatt-hours. Then we have the red shaded area, which is the fixed-price market contract. That's the Nextera contract. It's good between 70 and 78 gigawatt-hours, and then there's about 11 gigawatt-hours that we purchase on the spot market. Now, the percentages along the bottom would be the percentage of time that we see that kind of load. So at the extreme left, we're looking at about 82 megawatts, which is our system peak. And then the black line kind of disappears into the NIPA contract at about 80%. Next slide, please. So here, you can see our net load against our Prairie State obligation. And again, as on the previous slide, the red line kind of dips below the Prairie State line at about 80%. So we're a little bit long in our energy requirements, but we do this as a hedge in case we have price spikes for weather events like we saw in February. Even though we didn't see the spot market prices like they did down south, there was a substantial increase. But we didn't have to worry about that because we have a fixed contract to meet our load obligations. It's interesting to note, most of the time, up to 80% of the time, we always have 35 megawatts at least on the system. So the Prairie State obligation is sized to meet that requirement. And I believe that is the end of my presentation. Turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Before I start the second half of the presentation, I did want to point out that there, I did notice that there are several people out in the audience taking notes and that this presentation will be posted to the city's webpage tomorrow, just to ease everybody. So as we start the second half, here's why we're here. Currently down in Springfield, there are five significant pieces of legislation that are under review by various committees, senators, and representatives. And we also have Exelon and ComEd actively campaigning for their energy bill. These energy bills are different, but they're also similar. They range in topics from including the requirement to install car charging stations in new apartment buildings and multifamily housing units, to electric car ride-share opportunities in inner cities, to pushing a carbon tax for removal of coal mining operations, and even ensuring that all new green energy projects are covered under prevailing wage, which is something that typically only government agencies are obligated to do. But I do want to point out that there are over 2,066 pages of legislation currently under review down in Springfield. And that's counting. To be honest with you, I haven't checked today, so that number could have gone up. To kind of give you all a visual reference what 2,066 pages looks like, that's over four reams of paper. And we're all familiar with how much a ream looks like, so. But there are some commonalities amongst all these, and that is a clear movement to move the state of Illinois from carbon-based energy production into renewable energy production. And that is what I'll be talking about for the remainder of the presentation. Is the mic not picking me up?
I think it is, but just perhaps a little louder might be...
That would be helpful.
Yeah. And of course, ladies and gentlemen, for what it's worth, this meeting will be rebroadcast and available in perpetuity on YouTube, et cetera, so. But if there is challenge in hearing, just go ahead and raise your hand. I'll make certain that we try our best.
So as we move forward with the next slide, NIPA. So there, in 2004, the city entered into an agreement to enter into a joint power purchasing agreement through the Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency. The City of Geneva does not own Prairie State. The NIPA, which is the overall parent organization that is comprised of the cities of Geneva, Batavia, and Rochelle, is the actual owner of Prairie State. Prairie State is a 1,600-megawatt coal-fired generating facility. It also has its own onsite coal mine at Lively Grove, and it has its own internal 30-year of coal reserves. The power sales agreement with NIPA that the City of Geneva entered into in 2004 runs through December of 2041. And that is when the bonds are paid off. The NIPA will still remain an owner of Prairie State in 2041, but that is when the bonds will be paid off. And if you move on to the next slide, that is an aerial image of Prairie State. Basically, what you see, the two large rectangular buildings, they look like large square boxes on the left side at the center of the image. Those are the actual boilers and the power generators. And everything you see to the right of them are various pollution control devices and emission controls that have been installed for the facility. Here we go on to the next slide. So this is the NIPA debt service payments in millions of dollars. There are six columns there. The first column is the year. The next two columns are 2009 and 2010 bonds. Those are America First bonds that were issued at that time. The third bond, which is labeled 2016A, was a previously issued bond that was refinanced in 2015 and went into effect in 2016. And then you see the total column. And again, these numbers are in millions of dollars. Probably the most relevant column is the far-right column, which is Geneva's share of that total bond debt payment. Again, I would stress that these numbers are in millions of dollars, and these are bonds that the city pays NIPA through our rate purchasing agreements. So NIPA is required to provide the City of Geneva power. Whether and where that power comes from is an obligation of NIPA to secure. That power comes through Prairie State because that's where we have the bonds. But that bond payment and those debts are what the city does have to pay through 2041. To save you all a little bit of math and arithmetic, if you go and add up Geneva's share from 2030 through 2041, it comes out to just over $97 million. And that is a relevant number because depending on which version of the legislation you're looking at, 2030 could be the time where Prairie State would go dark. Moving on to the next slide. And I am basically giving a little bit of staff's analysis of the impacts of the various legislations on our portfolio as we move along. So the next slide, we discuss Nextera Energy. Nextera Energy is that 5-by-16 long-term contract that the city entered into through 2024. As Manager Holden has referred to, it's five days a week, 16 hours, on-peak power between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM. The size of the block energy is month from month. So in April, it's 10 megawatts, and in August, it was 35 megawatts. This is called a hedge. The utility has a number of hedges that we do, and we do that to ensure or reduce the likelihood of volatility with the billing. They cost a little bit of money, but they do provide price stability. And with the utility having its last rate increase in 2012, we have been, we feel very successful. But in extreme weather conditions, much as like what Texas encountered last winter or what the city encountered in 2014, that hedge would pay us off in dividends. So Nextera's portfolio and portion of the city's contract that's under contract is probably the least likely to be impacted as a result of the potential legislation down in Springfield. And the next slide kind of shows the portfolio of where Nextera gets its energy from. Nextera's, the predominant source of energy in their portfolio is wind, followed by nuclear, then solar, and then oil and natural gas. So the city can rightfully point to this portion of our contract as being predominantly green-based. We do not and cannot claim this as green energy because we do not purchase the, what's called the REX, which is a renewable energy certificate. Thank you. I keep wanting to call in credit, so whoever just whispered that out behind me, I owe you one. So the Nextera Energy is green energy, and it puts us in a very good position actually moving forward with whatever the state legislation is right now because, again, this portion of our portfolio is already providing us about 20% of our power on a daily basis. Moving on to the next generator for our facility, that is the Geneva Generating Facility. For those of you that don't know, this is off of Avril, near the airport. It was constructed in 2004. The city made its last payment on its debt last year, so we have title to it now. It entered into commercial operations in 2005 at a cost of $18 million, which included the installation of the substation that's onsite, as well as various system modifications such as switches and additional cables. Why is this important to the city? GGF operates behind the meter. And that is a phrase that's utilized in operations. So the world sees the City of Geneva as a single customer, much as we would see our residents or commercial entity or an industrial entity as a single entity. When we're operating GGF, the Geneva Generating Facility, it is basically operating to reduce capacity charges and transmission charges. So as we'll move, we'll see here shortly why that's relevant and important. But this facility basically runs between 150 and 200 hours a year. So that really is, it runs less than an hour a day. Now, it doesn't run every day. It runs predominantly during the summer months, but it is a substantial contribution to saving our customers a substantial amount of fees and charges. Why is that relevant is because this facility is a gas-fired facility. And again, depending on what the impacts of the legislation are moving forward, is if we go to a carbonless or carbon-free power grid, this facility will no longer be able to operate because it is gas-fired. And that will have a rather dramatic impact on our customer base. The next slide shows an exterior image of the facility. So if you've ever driven past and wondered what that large hangar-like building is, there you go. So why is this important? The City of Geneva is in the PJM Regional Transmission Organization. PJM stands for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland. That started out as a regional RTO, and it has since grown to encompass a significant portion of the east coast as well as the upper Midwest. So it operates a transmission system. It is actually the framework, or as people like to talk about the grid, there are, there really is not a single grid. There are multiple smaller RTOs that comprise the grid throughout the nation. PJM is also there to assure that there's a reserve capacity of power within the network. Geneva does not receive a bill from ComEd except for a few streetlights off of Cowthorne, so just in all accuracy. But we receive a monthly bill from PJM. So PJM basically charges the city for transmission and capacity rights to move the energy back and forth throughout the system. And then PJM pays the owners of the cables and the various facilities to make sure that the energy is available. On the next page, you'll see a graphic image of the PJM network. So it doesn't have to be contiguous to be in the network. You can see that the vast majority of the users are out on the east coast, but there is a certain portion of southwest Michigan as well as northeast Illinois. Interestingly enough, as you go on to the next slide, this is MISO. And MISO is the RTO where Prairie State is located, down in Marissa, Illinois. As part of a cost-saving measure, various utilities and owners within the PJM network negotiated to create a portal which allows the energy from MISO to flow at a reduced tariff cost from the Prairie State facility into the PJM network. So you've heard me say several times of a capacity market and a transmission market. And it's confusing. I've been in this position for seven years, and it's really just been recently where you start feeling you're getting comfortable with learning the new language of an electric utility. But on the next slide, I came across a really good definition, and this kind of helped lock it in for me. So what is the PJM capacity market? PJM capacity market is called a reliable pricing mode, ensures long-term grid... ensures long-term grid reliability by securing the appropriate amount of power supply resources needed to meet predicted energy demand in the future. As the soon-to-be-retired superintendent refers to it, this is, PJM is paying the owners of the iron in the ground to be there to produce electricity when it's needed, as it's needed. In order to do that, PJM charges what's called capacity and transmission rights on the various members that actually pull electricity out of that system into their nodes. And this is where GGF becomes a very critical component of the city's infrastructure market as well as our portfolio. On the next page, you will see a four-year cost savings of what GGF does for our customers. So, the city gets charged capacity as well as transmission costs a year in arrears. So, based on what the city withdraws and when we withdraw it out of the PJM market this year, it sets the rates for what we're going to get charged for next year. So, when you, if you remember back to that graph with the red overlay of operations onto our load factor, where Aaron had mentioned the dips or the use where GGF was running. We run GGF when it's anticipated there's going to be a peak demand day. And what that does is because we're generating that power behind the meter, it lowers our impact on the PJM market. And this then saves us capacity charges and transmission savings. Believe it or not, PG, the GGF exists to shave off our energy demands 10 days out of the year. It runs on more days than that, just as a safety margin. But if we can hit those 10 peak days a year, what it does is it saves us money in the following year for those rates. Again, that facility runs between 150 and 200 hours a year, and its goal is to make 10 days. This table gives you a graphic representation of what that facility saves our customers on an annual basis. And it ranges over a four-year run between 2017 and 2020, when we have the data available, between 2.2 million and $3.2 million on an annual basis. That is divided by 10,000 customers. GGF is a critical piece of the city's portfolio and its reliability network, and it is a direct threat with the legislation in Springfield because it is carbon-fired, runs off of natural gas. But it's not the only facility that runs behind the meter. That also runs off of gas. As we move into the next slide, that is the Waste Management Renewable Energy Facility located at Sudders Hill. And as had been alluded to earlier today, this facility is powered through methane gas that is collected through refuse decomposition at the Sudders Hill facility. And while the methane production is starting to fall off as the facility gains in age, it is still enough to provide energy and capacity behind the meter. So, it not only generates energy directly for the city, it generates all that energy behind the meter. So, again, it's lowering our view or our impact on the PJM network. But because this is also, even though it's considered and classified as a renewable energy, it is a gas-fired facility, it's methane gas. So, again, depending on which way the legislation goes. And I am not going to turn around and tell you that I know where the legislation's going, and I'm not going to turn around and tell you that it's all good or it's all bad. But the way, the commonalities with the legis, the five bills that are being proposed down in Springfield does put this facility at risk. And if the generation facility is forced to power down, that methane is still going to get flared off because it just can't simply sit underneath the ground or will have other issues to deal with. Well, we're almost done. The next picture actually is just an image of the Sudders Hill facility. And then, I just wanted to end it again by reiterating what the Electric Division's operating and mission statement is. It's to serve the community with reliable power at the lowest price. We, as professionals and as a city, are committed to being stewards of the environment. We do that time and time again. And the city has committed and shown repeatedly that we will pursue protecting the environment as a goal. The improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, the city purposely chose to go of which a much more expensive capital route to use an organic treatment method that is natural as opposed to using chemical and biological, or using chemical treatment, which has potential impacts to the environment. We are constantly reviewing and revising our snow and ice control to reduce the amount of chlorides we use, which impacts the environment. And we are constantly reviewing and updating and upgrading and maintaining our storm water, which, again, directly impacts the quality of the Fox River. So, I cannot tell you unequivocally if any of this legislation is better than the rest. All I can do is say in reviewing that the five pieces of major legislation, whatever, of course, that legislation comes out is what we as staff are going to implement. But the commonalities are, is that there is a movement to move the state of Illinois away from carbon-based energy and into renewables. And that is going to have an impact both on the debt load for NIPA, which is paying for Prairie State through 2041. And we are very constrained with being able to renegotiate those bonds. GGF, which has a direct and immediate savings to the customer base, is also a potential target as well as the Sudders Hills facility. And we are watching that legislation down in Springfield, as are you all. And we will react and adapt as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babica. I'd like to begin with questions or comments from our committee members. I'll first defer to anybody joining us remotely if they have any questions for either Mr. Holton or Mr. Babica regarding the presentation this evening. Then I'll ask those in the chamber. And once we, as a committee, wrap up our questions or comments, I'll invite those in the public to join us as well, those joining us live, and of course, those joining us virtually. So, with that, anyone joining us remotely, either Alderwoman Burghart, Alderman Mayor, Alderman Maladra, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I just have a question. So, Rich and Aaron, thank you. This was a great overview of Geneva. What I think personally is missing is an overview of this legislation. You mentioned, you know, there's five bills being talked about and things like that. I guess the question is, do we know anything for certain about this legislation? I heard a lot of stuff about potential threats to the GGF, potential threats here and there. But at this point in time, on May 10th, what do we know for certain about the legislation?
The crystal ball is rather murky at this time. And I'm not being facetious with that answer. It's, we simply don't know. I've been in Public Works operations for 30 years. Most of my, most of my life, I've been doing this job. I've been a director for 17 years. It has been my experience, whenever I'm dealing with Springfield or whatever state agency, is that until they come out with the final rule, you simply don't know what to expect until that final rule comes out. So, I just feel it's disingenuous for me to give you a breakdown on those five pieces of legislation. Each one has its sponsor, each one has its agenda. And my personal opinion is that the final mix is going to be some amalgamation of all five with a little bit of CalMed and Exelon just thrown in for spice and see where it takes us. But the one commonality that I do see and the one overriding goal is to move the state of Illinois' energy portfolio away from carbon-based energy into a renewable-based energy. So, that is where we're going. The only question is, is what vehicle takes us there?
Well, and at what pace, right? I think that, so nothing is certain, understood. I think also, at some point, maybe tonight, maybe some other night, we have to start talking about what, you know, like what we would like to see coming out of this. I don't think that there's anybody on the city council or anybody on staff who can sit here and say that we don't support getting away from carbon-based energy. We don't support renewable energy. We don't support a transition to something better. But the question always is, how do we get there? And at what, at what cost? And so, that's the kind of thing that we have to start keeping an eye on. It sounds as if we're sort of passive participants waiting to see what the state does to us. But I, I believe that there's a lot of realities that our partners in Springfield need to be made aware of, and I'm sure you guys have been doing that. So, that was it. That's my only question so far. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra, if I may, I'd like to share with you some information via our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, regarding where each key piece of legislation stands now.
Okay.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie, and then I'll add some comments following.
And I will say, this is just the information I got today off of the General Assembly's website. But as far as the Clean Energy Jobs Act, the House bill, was referred to the rules on April 23rd. I will say, to make it easier, on April 23rd, the SEJA House Bill, the COOJA House Bill, the PATH to 100, and the Illinois Renewable Energy Investment Act were all referred to the Rules Committee. The corresponding Senate bills for each of those went different places. Two of them today were referred to the Energy and Public Utilities Committee. The Climate Union Jobs Act Senate Bill on April 30th was given a third reading deadline of May 21st. The Consumer and Climate First Act, which is a Senate bill, was in assignments on April 29th. And then the Illinois Renewable Energy Investment Act, the House bill, like I said, went to Rules on April 23rd. The Senate bill has been in assignment since February. So, again, they're all kind of in different parts of the process. They've been re-referred. The only one that has a reading deadline right now is the Climate Union Jobs Act, Senate side.
Thank you.
And Alderman Maladra, as you well know, I've participated in meetings with our professional staff. I've participated in meetings with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, the Greenest Region Compact, to share with our leaders in Springfield and our representatives and senators in Springfield what the potential impact might mean irrespective of what bill is being advanced and at what stage or at what pace. So, I think it's fair to say, Mr. Babica, you would agree that our legislators know where we stand with respect to our edification of them on how our operations work.
That is, that is correct.
Same with Rochelle, same with Batavia, same with Naperville, same with St. Charles as part of their IMEA contract. So, this is broader than just NIPA, if you will. It involves a lot of communities with respect to, I believe, a lot of education required with respect to considerations of voting and which way to vote irrespective of what legislation percolates at the end, so.
And it's also relevant to note that each of those agencies that you just reviewed are impacted differently by the legislation. While we are a member of NIPA with Rochelle and Batavia, our energy portfolio and our system is structured dramatically different than either one of those organizations. So, while we are in the same position as a municipality, as a muni, as we refer to ourselves, our impacts are fundamentally different and will be felt in different ways or manners than anybody else because of the way our system is structured.
And I will say this, then I'll recognize Alderman Bruno. All of you probably know, based on earlier statements made by any and all of the proponents of any and all of the legislation, there were promises made at the early stages of all said legislation that municipalities would have a seat at the table. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. So, we are finding ourselves bringing chairs to the tables that have been set so that everyone understands what our position is. That's it. With that, Alderman Bruno. Then Alderman Mayor, I believe you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start by making it clear. I think in my eight years on the council so far, I have always been impressed with Public Works' management of a very complex and important system in our community. I think they've, they have certainly met their... They were up to the task of the mission statement that defines them, reliable and lowest possible cost. We're here ostensibly because of all the circulating legislation to figure out, you know, what's the impact to us? Can we know the impact to us? Is there some way we can influence this that can mitigate our somewhat unique position? Not as bad as some other communities, but worse than a lot. But it's a complex problem. But primarily, I wanted to thank Public Works, A, for the presentation and the work they've done to date. Thanks.
And before I recognize Alderman Mayor, we should also recognize the fact that the gentleman to the right, Alderman Bruno, is a new grandfather. So, congratulations.
I am impossibly young to be a grandfather.
Alderman Mayor, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to ask a question about the volume of natural gas that GGF uses and the amount of electricity that it produces. I think we got the hours and the amount of money it saves, but I don't think we have those numbers.
Hal, I'm going to defer to you for answering the natural gas question, if you're there.
I am here, and that is an excellent question. Unfortunately, that's not something I have memorized. I think we'll have to get back to Amy Mayor and the rest of the council and let them know what those numbers are later.
Alderman Mayor, the floor is still yours.
Oh, what do I do to give it back then? I'm done.
Any other questions? Okay. Alderwoman Burghart?
Nothing for me right now, thank you.
Anyone in the chamber? Alderman Swanson, and then Alderwoman Ruby.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Babica. In an early slide, it showed that 58% of the budget is going to purchase power. Can I assume that on the slide that came later, there was 10.5 million of the debt service of NIPA? That that's buried in that 58%?
That is a correct assumption.
Okay. And is it also true that any of the competing bills, we would still be obligated to pay that amount?
That is also correct.
Okay. So, none of them have any relief from that?
There's, not currently.
Okay. And my second question has to do with the GGF. If Geneva had a solar farm, would that at least partially provide some of the benefit that GGF is providing?
I'm going to defer that answer to Manager Holton because he has already done some rough calculations for that. So, I'm going to step aside while he steps forward.
Welcome back, Mr. Holton.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Swanson, that's an excellent question. We have looked at it. The answer is yes and no. It depends on, it largely depends on with solar, especially when the peaks happen during the day. I mean, you have solar on your business, you're well aware that the peaks might not happen when your peak usage happens. So we did kind of, we have put a little bit of pencil to paper to see how much solar it would take just to replace GGF. We're looking at about 120 acres to build a solar farm large enough to replace the 30 megawatts of capacity for GGF. How it would affect the CP hours and whatnot, I, you know, I can't really give you a good answer on that one.
Okay. And looking at just the acreage, what acreage would we have available, the GGF property, anything that we purchased out at Beck Road? Would we come close to 120 acres?
We didn't really get that far into it. I believe GGF's on six acres, I believe. Other green spaces in the city, Out by Prairie Green, we just bought another six acres. I don't know if you could, I don't know if you could piece enough pieces together to get you that, get you that amount or not.
Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Mr. Babica, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, probably a good graphical representation, I'm a visual person, is the Southeast Industrial Park that's currently under review for potential development is an 80-acre industrial park. So you would be looking at one and a half times the Southeast Industrial Park for the solar field for, to replace, potentially to replace GGF. And further, I would point out that as an electric utility, that would have to be 100% funded by the customer base, as we would not be eligible for grants or funding through any of the existing programs.
Is that because it would be supportive of PJM?
It's because it would be owner-owned and operated.
Owner-operated, got it, okay. But it would feed PJM?
It would.
Okay. It would not be behind the meter?
No, it would be behind the meter, but it would not be as reliable as GGF. GGF, we can run on demand to meet those targeted days. We would be less, we would have less ability to control in meeting those targeted 10 special days out of the year.
Okay. You're welcome. Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. So while we're on the GGF, I'm curious if any plans were ever discussed about a potential transition to renewable energy? I mean, the facility was just built in 2004. Was that ever a consideration?
I would have to review the meeting minutes from 2004. I simply can't answer that question.
Okay, so as of today, there's no Plan B for GGF? It's, if we transition to renewables, it's just, it just shuts down?
The legislation currently percolating would literally, if I may use dramatic terms, render the Geneva Generation Facility as a stranded asset.
Useless, yeah.
I think go useless, yeah, exactly.
Okay. And do we know anything about help from the state of Illinois? Are there, are there any, is that in any of the legislation plans for the state to, to help the municipalities that are impacted? What do we know about that?
Currently, there is no language in any of the bills being proposed that would provide, what's the best word to use?
Guarantees?
Guarantees of any municipality.
Or to treat the municipalities differently.
Or, yeah, more importantly, or to treat any municipality differently.
Okay.
So, yeah, municipal-owned utilities would be the same as those currently receiving energy exclusively from ComEd, for example.
Okay.
So sometimes, respectfully speaking, when our legislators look at some of the legislation, they think all 1,300 municipalities in Illinois are the same. And of course, we all know that's, that's not the case, so.
Okay, thank you. A couple other things that, just going through my mind here. The mission statement doesn't, does currently say lowest cost. That obviously has not officially changed, but I just wanted to point out that we have talked about that as a council on multiple occasions, strategic planning, various council meetings in the past. I think that we are all very much, like Alderman Bruno said, you know, we're very much supportive of the renewables. So I think the mission statement itself, while that is the official direction that we have given you, I really think we need to look at that, but that's for another day. On those same terms, I'm curious, Rich, sorry, I'm really going to put you on the spot here. We have obvious financial and environmental implications that we're looking at here, and I'm curious if you have any suggestions on how we weigh and balance both. Or you can make Hal answer.
Well, I mean, that's a pretty global question. We are on the front lines, literally. The Public Works and our sister agencies throughout the nation are the front lines as being environmental stewards. We're the ones that are actually getting our hands dirty and, and keeping, keeping it working, from planting trees to reclaiming water, to reducing the amount of chlorides for salt and snow operations. So we are constantly reviewing options. We are constantly stealing other agencies' ideas and taking full credit for them. So we talk to each other. I think that's something that maybe the public doesn't quite realize how much the agencies talk to each other. I just was, somehow got roped into a three-day-long conversation about building roads across railroads. And because of the Third Rail Project, they kept calling me, and I'm like, I really got a lot of things to deal with right now than dealing with your issue out in Portland. But we, we are constantly taking good ideas and trying to implement new, new strategies and new, new ideas. So nobody in this, in the Public Works industry, or even in the municipal power industry, or water, utility, streets, fleets, whatever it is, we love being outside. I think that's why this job appeals to us. And so we want to be good stewards of the environment. So we're not just poo-pooing away ideas, but we also have the added burden then of implementing those ideas. And sometimes, ideas and goals and dreams and aspirations really don't work so well in the real world. And we have to find a way of taking that dream and goal as defined by the 10 of you in a policy statement and then making it happen. And that, that can be a challenge here. But in this instance, we just want to make sure that you, as the Board of Directors for the electric utility, which is really what you are in this instance, are getting the idea of the financial impacts, because the general trend is headed this way. We are going to react to that general trend. This is what we've identified as potential pitfalls. And it could be bad, it could be, you know, the legislation could be, could save us money, it could cost us money. We're not going to know until that legislation is there. So this is not a doom and gloom, and we are all gonna, you know, get zapped here by this legislation. But these are things we've identified as things we should be aware of, and we feel you need to be aware of moving forward.
Okay.
I, I, I.
But I'm good for now. Thank you, Rich.
Okay.
Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg, sir?
You know, I think that there's inevitability about this, and.
Microphone?
I think there's an inevitability about this, that something is going to be enacted coming out of Springfield that will have consequences on Geneva. Potentially huge financial impact on, on Geneva. I think our, our concern or our communication moving forward with our elected officials as it relates to this topic is, is that please don't pass on to our community another unfunded mandate. I think the reality is, is that we need a funded mandate if in fact they support this. Because, I mean, we looked at the numbers here. This would overwhelm the, the utility customers here in our community. And I think we have a lot of history with Springfield giving us unfunded mandates. I think all these things are great, but who is going to do the heavy lifting as it relates to financing it? I don't think the state of Illinois is in any great financial shape right now to assume some of the financial burdens that we're talking about here. But the inevitability of it is, it's going to happen. So what do we do? I think we communicate that please don't give us any more unfunded mandates. Geneva's had enough of those as it relates to a number of our public bodies, from the county level to the, our park districts, to our, our school districts, to our municipalities. I think that, I think the horse is out of the barn already, based off of everything that I've read. And I think that what we do now is going to be somewhat inconsequential. And that I think all we can do is really ask for some type of relief as to what might be coming. That's all I got.
Thank you. Alderman Caven, sir?
Thank you. And thank you, Rich, and team, for giving the overview and everything tonight. I thought you had a really lot of, well, I wouldn't say great information, you had very good detailed information. I would prefer something, something better. But I, just to echo what a couple other people said, I don't think that there's anybody who wouldn't like to see more, you know, carbon-free energy, renewable energy. To reiterate what Dean said, my hope would be that whatever winds up coming out of Springfield, there is some type of support for municipalities such as ours, and ours might be in worse condition right now than some other ones, you know, based on some different factors. But just to tell us that something needs to happen, and you're looking at, what was that, $97 million between 1930 and 1940, or 2000, 2030 and 2040? That is essentially bonds that we have to support and pay, and then we still have to find, you know, energy to provide for our ratepayers, or have to pay for something additional. I think that it would be great to be able to do that, don't get me wrong. I absolutely support that. But how that's going to be paid for, and what the legislation is ultimately going to look like, and the fact that there are five bills there right now, what'd you say, 2,066 pages? And things are still ever-changing? I mean, I guess if anybody hears anything, my hope would be that if we receive a mandate from the state, the city actually receives some support to try to be able to put those into, actions into place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I had one more.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I'll take my turn here. Alderman Kostarak, I think, has his hand up also. Oh, no, I just, as it relates to unfunded mandates, the state legislature right now is trying to take more of the state funding that, that is in our state constitution as it relates to the local government distributive funds. So here's the state that's wanting to take more from the municipality while giving them an additional, probably unfunded mandate. So I just don't think that there's anybody probably in Springfield that's going to be all that sympathetic about Geneva's plight here. And I think unless the community communicates with our elected officials, I think that the inevitability of it will come to pass. And that, again, not only they're taking our local government distributive funds, but then they're going to give us an unfunded mandate on top of it. So, you know, I think sometimes we're at our greatest risk when Springfield is in session, I just wanted to point that out, because that is a hot topic right now too, Mayor, local government distributive funds. And you might, and again, you're well briefed on it, you might make a comment in regard to that too, although it's not related necessarily to this, although it is related to Springfield and, and what, what we're faced with here as May draws ever closer to some type of legislation that we're going to probably need to live with.
I think the most salient terms are unfunded mandates. There's not anyone in this room, or anyone tuning in, or anyone who will watch this meeting tomorrow or the thousand days after tomorrow and argue that renewable energy's not good. In fact, what I've written in response to many of the residents who have written to me is, we support the legislation's philosophy. Absolutely, we do. The issue is, what's the other side of that equation? And here's another example of an unfunded mandate, respectfully speaking, whether it be LGDF or even lead line replacement. Nobody argues that lead line should not be replaced. The issue percolating now is, how do you pay for it? A municipality like ours doesn't have a whole heck of a lot of, quote, issues. The cost to Chicago alone is upwards of $7 billion. So when you thumb through every piece of legislation, I think Alderman Kilber is correct, the ultimate question becomes, is there funding for it, or is there not? And I think if there was funding for any piece of legislation with respect to clean energy, we'd all be cosignatories of that legislation. It's my gut anyways, so. Alderman Kostarak?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Babica, and Holton, and everybody for the presentation. As you know, Director Babica was asking you last week what our customers would potentially pay more, how much money? And you couldn't answer the question, of course, because we don't know what's happening or how it'll end up. But when we were talking about the Geneva Generating Facility, we were saving, it saves maybe around $3 million a year. I'm using round numbers there, based on the chart that you did. So divided by 10,000 customers, that'd be $300 a year. Is it, and this is a little bit of a gotcha question, but I'm just trying to think it out, and I've received a lot of emails that said, I want to pay more over the last week. If we have a $97 million, let's say it's worst-case scenario, go dark on 2030, is it to say that essentially our customers are going to be paying around $9,700 additional? I realize people pay different rates, I'm not trying to break that all down, and things like that, but is that really, and I know it wouldn't be one bill, it'd be amortized over the course of the bonds, probably, things like that, but is that essentially worst-case scenario, what we could be looking at?
No. And here's the reason why. I understand the logic of how you're getting there, but that debt is owned by NIPA. And that $97 million is the city's portion of that debt that's owed to NIPA to repay its bonds. That first chunk of energy in our portfolio that comes from NIPA, the cost of that energy includes that bond payment. That debt retirement is built into the energy rates. So if the energy's coming from Prairie State, it's built into that. If it's coming off the open market, or if it's coming from a wind farm off the Chesapeake Bay, it, that debt is paid, is built into the rate that NIPA charges its members. So until that debt is retired through 2041, even if Prairie State is dark, that annual bond payment for that year is built into the rate structure that is then charged to the customers of the city of Geneva. And the other thing that I wanted to point out about GGF is that is not a, the cost that, the savings, the potential savings that GGF generates with the capacity and transmission market, if you go back to the slides and you see the percentages of energy -- if you go back to the slides and you see the percentages of energy that's consumed by our customers, and I think that's slide four. Over half of the energy that's consumed by the customers in the city of Geneva is consumed by 63 of our major industrial providers. So they're the ones that are going to feel the loss of GGF and the waste management first. Yeah. This, so this is the top 10 customers in kilowatt-hours. These are the ones that are going to feel the loss or the increase of the rate. And then there's all the ancillary costs that go up with this. So it's not just the individual, it's not just going to be you, actually, are our customers that are going to feel it. You're going to feel it, but the industrial and the commercial base accounts for 75% of our load. They're going to feel it first.
I don't want to interrupt you. Is that?
Yeah. I'm starting to lose my voice. I forgot to bring my water bottle up, so.
Feel free to grab it.
Thank you.
Yeah, go grab it.
It's going to be a good night for my wife. When I get home, I won't be able to argue with her.
She's tuned in, Rich, you're in trouble.
That's any day that ends in Y.
So I guess I agree with what you said earlier about how we're acting as the Board of Directors of a public utility. So I guess I'm taking that into account. So whether we're talking about residents or businesses enacting in their financial best interest is where I guess I'm trying to go. Are you, in your answer about the $97 million, was it energy's part of that payment? And so it's going to be, the debt service is going to be less? Because we'll get power from somewhere else? Or is it, that's the debt service plus whatever power we bring in?
Option number two.
Okay. So in a way, I mean, maybe you didn't like the way I just, my simple math was too easy. But there is, our customers will, again, worst-case scenario, goes dark on 2030, unfunded mandate, we're going to have to pay $97 million. Our customers are going to have to pay $97 million.
Correct.
From 2030 to 2041.
And NIPA will still be an owner of Prairie State in 2041. It's just the asset will be debt-free. And then there will be ongoing costs. If the facility goes dark, the facility has to be decommissioned. So there will be costs that'll still be encountered even though it's not generating energy. So there is, it's complicated. And that's one of the things that we have been looking at with the legislation because each of the bills has a different target date. And there are, you know, significant lobbying going on, not from the city, but through other power co-ops of when these facilities do go dark. And we're only a 7.9% share owner through NIPA of that facility. 7.9%, $97 million debt.
So I guess I'll just ponder out loud whether, when I get these emails, and I'm not taking anything out of their sincerity, but I get them and I'm like, I just wonder if they really understand how much expense is involved? If they think it's just $10 more a bill, great, let's go with renewable energy. But if it's $1,000 extra a year, well, that could really, that could really hurt a lot. My other question, I see other people are raising questions, but if I still have the floor. Is there anything that we have done or that we can do or about to do to move away from NIPA and expand our renewable energy portfolio regardless of the state legislation? For example, have we looked at, 2024, our NextEra contract is up. Have we looked at our ability to extend that? Will there be that option? Will there be the option to expand that contract? Are we identifying other similar organizations with renewable energy? Obviously, we have done some from Alderman Swanson's questions. And we've looked into the solar farms around here. But is there anything else that we have done up to now to sort of mitigate the effects of that?
Hal, feel free to jump in if you feel the need. But the NextEra contract will basically go out to bid in 2023, maybe 2022, somewhere in that range. And like with any other bid that the city issues, we will have to draw up a list of specifications for what's going to be included in that bid. At that point in time, we will be able to pretty much do and secure a contract that whatever the city council will tolerate and pay for. That could be a combination. And again, this is where a lot of, where the legislation shakes out is going to make the determination. NextEra is a green energy portfolio. We can, honestly, I can look you all in the eye and say that our NextEra contract is green energy-based. Heavily weighted to green energy. But in the world of regulations with the electric utility industry, we cannot claim that as renewable energy because we do not secure and purchase the REX. And that is, whether or not we're going to have to secure those REX is going to be determined by the legislation down in Springfield. The legislation in Springfield may also determine what the percentage of our portfolio has to be renewable. Is it 100%? Is it 30%? Is it going to be a staged implementation where we're going to go 2020, 2020, 2020 till we get to the path to 100? That's where it goes back to the analogy of, we know where we're going, but how we get there has yet to be defined. And when we last put the NextEra contract out in 2016, I was here for that. And we locked it in through 2024. We were able to secure energy that is cheaper in 2024 than what we were purchasing for it in 2015. Because by taking out that hedge in the market, we transfer all the risk to that energy provider. To us, it doesn't matter where that energy comes from under the current contract as long as they get the energy to us to our note. But if the city council decides that we want to go with 100% energy portfolio and we're going to go ahead and purchase the REX when we put this back out to bid in 2022, 2023, you know, that'll have, whatever that cost of that additional requirements will be built into that energy portfolio. So the answer to that is yes, it depends, and most likely.
Okay. So I guess my last question is, to be clear about the legislation, it is control, is it controlling where we get our energy from? Or just how energy is produced in the state of Illinois?
It's a great question.
That is, that is, that is an amazing question.
It's yes and yes, depending on the legislation.
So it could be, obviously where I'm going with this, and is there a chance that our energy in Illinois is still coal-based from a non-Illinois source? Or is this legislation say, no way, you've got to get your energy from renewable sources? I don't care if it's from Wisconsin, the Eastern Seaboard, or your own facility?
That begs the question of the requirements for the REX. If the legislation says you have to get the REX, then the city is going to have to go out on the open market and purchase those REX. And that is pure, you know, loss, supply and demand. It's whatever the market bears is what you're going to be buying those REX for. And under that scenario, if the city, if you purchase a REX, that is basically saying whatever power you're using is green. Doesn't matter where its point of origin is. So that energy could be coming from an out-of-state because we're in the PJM network. Then energy could be coming in from an out-of-state coal-fired facility in Kentucky. It could be coming from the wind farms outside of Bloomington, Illinois. It could be coming from the solar fields, off of solar panels, off of someone's parking deck. The energy gets pushed into the system and then it's consumed. It's generated and consumed instantaneously. But if, in order for you to claim that it's green, you have to have the REX. And using NextEra as a prime example, their portfolio is predominantly wind-generated. But we cannot advertise legally and say that we have green energy even though it's green-generated. Because the energy that we're consuming could have come from anywhere within that PJM market.
Okay. Just lastly, just want to say for anybody listening or constituents or anything, I'm all for clean energy moving on. I just think there's a lot of really difficult questions to be asked here. And expense involved and wondering where in the end is it going to leave the city of Geneva in terms of our energy sources? So figuring all that out is, I think, is really important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Marks, then Alderwoman Ruby?
Rich, Eric, great presentation. I've kind of seen some of it before, but I do appreciate it. And again, renewable energy, I don't think anybody on this council is getting, I don't think any staff members against. Are we required to purchase that energy from NIPA? And is NIPA then required to sell it to us even though Prairie State does not operate? Who's the end person that has to supply us those 35 megawatts?
As part of the purchase powering agreement, the city is obligated to purchase that electrical load from NIPA. Whether or not we use it is irrelevant to the NIPA organization. There are other members within that organization that have too much energy that then basically sell whatever energy they don't use back on the market or whatever the market rates will tolerate. We are obligated through the purchase powering, purchase power agreement that was adopted in 2004 to take power from NIPA. NIPA is a project-based organization, and I probably didn't get that exact term correct. But if Prairie State's, one of the boilers is offline for maintenance, Prairie State or NIPA actually has to buy that power through one of its hedges that it has contracts for to, if it's a known scheduled outage, for example, one of the boilers is going to be down in September. NIPA has, will take out a hedge to purchase that power to limit the exposure to its members to the marketplace. So no matter what, through 2041, we are going to be buying that power through NIPA.
And NIPA is required to sell it to us, correct? Find it and sell it to us?
NIPA is required to have it available for us.
All right. Roughly looking at those numbers, I know we can't say renewable or clean, but it's roughly right around 28% right now using NextEra and Waste Management Facility. Is that correct, 28%?
That's correct.
Okay.
Roughly.
Roughly, yeah. I'm not, so we're getting there as it is realistically?
We're probably one of the leading, we're probably one of the leading municipalities in Illinois for pursuing or for having a renewable energy portfolio.
We just can't advertise it that way.
Yeah, correct.
Is there any idea of what those REX costs? Do you have any ballpark or have we even looked at that yet?
I am going to call up Manager Holton.
Okay.
Who has done some research on that very topic.
I have reached out to our NextEra account executive and asked that very question. Said, "How much is it going to cost for us to purchase REX for our contract?" And right now, REX are going for about $3.50 a megawatt hour.
Which equates to roughly?
That'd be about three, what would that be, three and a half cents a kilowatt hour?
That's what I thought, okay.
And a couple of years ago, they were considerably cheaper. But as renewable energy has gained traction, those prices are going up. So the market, the market's raising the price of the REX.
So if a bill gets passed in Springfield, we would probably see a spike at that point then too? Or would it be more closer to when they want everything shut off?
That I don't know.
Okay. But it'd probably something we would have to look into sooner rather than later, it sounds like.
It's probably a safe bet to say they're not going to go down.
Okay. That's probably a good point. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. Rich, so I understand if Prairie State closure happened in 2030, we're obligated for the $97 million in bonds, no matter what. Can you walk me through any costs that we would avoid by Prairie State closing in 2030? Like operating costs of the plant, salaries, that type of thing? Is that something that you've researched?
No. And the reason is, is that the plant would have to be decommissioned. It's not something as simple as just throwing a switch and giving everybody a pink slip and sending them home. There is equipment that needs to be decontaminated, cleaned, stored, sold, scrapped, whatever is usable assets within the facility. This is assuming that the facility goes dark and there is never, ever any plans whatsoever for bringing the system back online. Whatever those decommissioning costs are, be it site restoration, removal of roads, securing the mine, those are all costs that are going to be encumbered by the members. And that is not something we can calculate. That is something that would have to be provided by the professional staff at Prairie State, which would then be split amongst the percentages with the various owners. And again, NIPA is a 7.9% shareholder of the Prairie State. And then that would then be split between the three agencies with Geneva being the share. That is an extremely complicated question. And that would be one that we would have no input or say whatsoever as a municipality. We would just simply be told, here's your, here's your share, cut us a check.
Okay. This is overwhelming. There's so many, so many parts and so many, everything just seems speculative. Is there, is there something that the city of Geneva would feel comfortable putting together for Springfield in terms of asking for assistance?
I don't, yeah, I don't think that's a question for Mr. Babacca to answer.
Okay.
And I, this is my position, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm certain that this will strike as familiar position. I think it's premature to do so.
Okay. Well, like Alderman Kilburg was saying, instead of another unfunded mandate, isn't the time now to tell Springfield?
It is. And we've met with our representatives here, whether it be Mr. Ugasty, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Hershhauser, Mr. Wheeler, Ms. Villa, and the others. I also have the opportunity, and one of my colleagues is here, Edith Macra from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We work with the 284-member Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. And this is on, in addition to LGDF, this is top of mind to everybody. I know those conversations are happening. The intensity of those conversations differ depending whether you're a muni-owned utility like Geneva or you're a, respectfully speaking, Schaumburg and you're ComEd. They have their own challenges, of course, with respect to the big utilities. There's something else to think about, and I think it's a good segue. Rich or Aaron or Hal, if you could answer this question for me, I think I know the numbers. But beyond just NIPA, I believe there are some 277 municipal utilities who have a share in Prairie State throughout. throughout the Midwest. Is that a fair number?
Hal, that, that's got you all written, all you, that's got you written all over it there, Hal.
Many of those organizations are out of state. One thing, Mr. Wright, one thing we've heard, and I think you've heard as well, is should legislation pass and Prairie State goes dark in 2030, is there a risk of litigation from those other agencies who have contracted with Prairie State? And do we then become liable for that litigation through our friends at NIPA? I don't know.
Well, certainly, that's, that's taking this out a long ways and there's speculation involved there. But the reality is, if this was happening in another state and Prairie State was there and there were commitments made, I think NIPA and Geneva as a part of that would be trying to mitigate our losses if that other state shut us down. So putting myself in their shoes, I would, I would think that there is a risk for litigation from the other owners. If NIPA were to be on the wrong side of that, we could wind up doing something that, that puts us in a, in a poor legal position. And Illinois may very well be sued as well if they do this and it impacts the other owners that are out of state.
And Superintendent Wright, is it fair to say that Ohio, Michigan, Indiana, Missouri, Kentucky are part of that Prairie State ownership group, if you will, for lack of a better word?
Yes, that is, that is very accurate, and I think your number of municipalities is, is pretty close as well.
277, okay. My, my gut tells me this, irrespective of the legislation, and I mean this respectfully, our legislators, and all of you know this, every legislative cycle in Springfield produces between 5,000 and 6,000 pieces of legislation. And for, respectfully, our legislators to understand the meat of everyone is impossible. I would argue, and I would say this if they were present, if they watched this meeting, I think they know I'm saying this respectfully, they don't have a full handle on either of these six pieces of legislation. That's why I believe, to Alderman Kilburg's point and to your point as well, they're aching for information from those like Geneva, Potavia, Rochelle, Naperville, St. Charles, you name it, to at least provide our perspective. So that when and if a vote comes, they can vote with all that information at hand. I, I do believe that's the case. And I will say this, to their credit, they are approachable, they, the legislators are approachable. They're accessible, and they constantly ask us questions as well, just as we do they. Geneva's not doing this alone. Again, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus is involved, our friends at the Metro West Council of Government, the lobbyists that we hire through that consortium is involved intimately. Dave Sullivan, a former state senator, provides us information almost on a daily basis. And we hear different things from different people. So it is, it's totally speculative. It really is. It's amazing.
So does the city of Geneva intend to formally submit their opinion to our legislators?
That would be up to this city council.
Okay, yeah, I, I would recommend that. I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but I just, and there's a lot more to discuss, but in a nutshell, I think supporting clean energy and asking for help from the state would be what I would like to see come out of this evening. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I approached this thinking if I take off my board of directors hat for Geneva, I'm absolutely supportive, like everyone else said here, we're absolutely supportive of green energy. The intent, I, I would write this sort of legislation if I had the chance in Illinois, at least the, the rough framework for it. Clearly gets complicated when we get into the weeds here in Geneva. That legislation is moving irrespective of what we do here. So I think it is, as the mayor just alluded, they are seeking input from us. And I think it's, I think it's important that we do have some statement, what I think would be some qualified support with some language that says, we absolutely support them with clean energy. These are the caveats as it relates to cities like Geneva with this type of ownership interest. So I would hope, I would hope that we would come to some agreement that we can communicate those feelings to our legislators. And I want to get to another point, this is for Rich, I think. Maybe I misunderstood something, so let's say for whatever reason, Prairie State doesn't go dark by 2041 where our bond obligations end. Were you suggesting that so after we pay off our bond, we still have some liability toward, for, for taking care of what's, what's left down there?
The bonds and the debt go through 2041. So the last payment is in December of 2041, and it is formally debt-free in 2042.
Okay.
Just like making a mortgage payment on your house. The NIPA is then a 7.9% owner because the debt has been paid for of Prairie State. If Prairie State is still functioning as an energy producer, NIPA is getting the energy through Prairie State. If, and not every power agency's debt ends at 2042. Hal, if I remember correctly, the last, I think one is paid off in 2054?
I believe it's 2047.
2047. So there, there is still a physical asset that, that is going to be owned by NIPA. And then the determination has to be made as to what is done with this asset. Is it going to be decommissioned and turned dark and scrapped and torn down? And the site restored to pre-existing conditions is, is it, is it, that, that is going to be a decision that's going to be made by the owners in determination as to what the legislation requires of the coal energy facilities.
Okay, and we are still owners in 2042, even though we're done paying?
Correct. You know, that, with the debt being paid, I, NIP, NIPA is the owner, and then the, you know, theoretically, it could be sold off on the open market if someone wanted to buy it with the consent of the other owners. So there are, there are any number of options there. But just like owning a house at that time, you have the exposure of owning that house. You still have to maintain the facility to keep its value.
Thanks. The other point that comes to mind is probably through carbon taxes or the equivalent, carbon-based electricity is going to be getting more expensive. I, I think we will see, regardless of what we do, just increasing costs through any carbon source. Well, but to my, to my primary point, I think it's, as the mayor alluded to, our legislators want in, want input, they want to see our perspective. I think our perspective is clear, we all support the concept. But if we, I think broadly outline the types of vulnerabilities that Geneva and communities like us have, I can't hurt, it, it can only help to have that communicated in Springfield. Thanks.
Alderman Marks, again, just a question, Mayor, staff or, and/or you have met with all of our representatives and understand our position, correct?
Yes.
And the downfalls, that, that we all like the green energy, but there are downfalls for cities like us, correct?
Well, the short answer is yes, and I want to be very clear for anyone tuning in. The meetings we've hosted with our representatives and senators was not to convince them one way or the other regarding any legislation percolating. It was to share with them, much like we're doing tonight, how our operations in the city of Geneva function.
So they understand our position realistically?
They do. And I, without using names, there, there's Rich and Mr. Wright who's on the phone, I will recall one meeting in particular. And again, forgive me for using the word, but I mean this respectfully, there is a dearth of knowledge with respect to how municipal electric utilities operate. Therefore, it's incumbent upon us to provide that information as clearly as possible so that when and if there is debate or discussion amongst their peers or conference committee or you name it, there's at least a better understanding. I think we've accomplished that. We hear from different lobbyists almost, well, virtually almost every day now, whether it be LGDF, whether it be the lead pipeline, whether it be the, the police reform legislation, whether it be clean energy. Where things are going, why they're going, who's signing on, who's signing off, what's changing? And I, I love Alderwoman Ruby's, it's all so speculative now. It's like betting on the Kentucky Derby and realize the damn thing was drugged up when it won. It's like, no disrespect, of course, to the trainers, but it's, it's, it's a tough.
But we've, staff or you, or, or both of you
Yes.
have met with every single one of the representatives that represent Geneva and have explained
And more, and more. Okay. And again, I will, I will share with all of you that you probably all know, we've also hosted Zoom meetings through my volunteer work at the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. I've attended multiple meetings here in King County, DuPage County, and elsewhere, whether it be the Sierra Club, whether it be the Illinois Jobs Coalition, just to learn as well from both sides of the aisle, if you will. So it's been a very enlightening, informative, and educational opportunity. I don't envy those who have to cast a vote because there is no, there is no, there's no easy solution, put it that way.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Alderman Mayor?
You're on mute.
I was double muted.
There you go.
So we own, we own part of Prairie State. Is that ownership worth anything right now, or is that pretty much a moot point because of all this controversy going on?
But there is, there is a value to the city's share of NIPA's ownership of Prairie State. However, it cannot, in order for it to be sold, it would have to be at a supermajority of the other shareholders. And while there's, there's a value to the building, you know, with depreciation and everything, it is simply not something that can be marketed out for sale.
Rich, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. Alderman Mayor, is your question more or less, is there a market for the energy shares that municipalities currently own? And if there is, can a municipality sell those shares to someone else? Or is it about the real estate and the structure itself?
It's mostly about, I, I take it that there's a discount to the rate of the energy that we buy from Prairie State because we're part owners. So is that worth anything to anyone else if we were to exit this, this whole deal?
By the terms of the purchase power agreement, we cannot exit the deal until the debt is paid off in 2041. And order for us to sell our share requires a near supermajority, if not almost unanimous vote of the other owners to authorize that share. And Hal, feel free to jump in on this one too. I think that's only happened one other time, at least in the last seven years, that there was a potential for sale and then it, it fell through.
I'm waiting for the camera to kick in, but the, the reality is that trying to sell our share, our NIPA's share of Prairie State on the open market is, especially with all the controversy going on, is, is probably slim to none right now. Peabody did get out of the deal and a co-op bought their share a while back, but they bought it at a very reduced price. It was a, well, if, if Prairie State continues to run, it was a good deal for them. If it doesn't, it won't be.
Do, do any, so when we're doing a development, for instance, when we're planning a new building, we have systems of ways to evaluate our energy models and savings. Do any of the bills proposed have any element of them that would allow us to plan to reduce our energy, our carbon, like take steps towards that instead of this cliff idea that we seem to be heading to?
Great question.
Currently, our load has been decreasing over the last several years. And a lot of that, it can be attributed to energy efficiency. Something as simple as the LED lights in the city council chambers to VFDs on motors and pumps and more energy-efficient means of production in the industrial sector. So the expansion, for example, of the Southeast Industrial Park, which is being advocated by, by the city, one of the potential advantages of expanding that industrial park is that it will stabilize our load. Because we are locked into these contracts. We are locked into purchasing a power agreement with NIPA through 2042. We are locked into a five-by-16 energy contract with Nextera through 2024. So we're using this energy. If we don't use that energy, we then sell it back into the market typically at a loss. So as we seek to expand our footprint, what we're trying to do is utilize or ensure that we are utilizing as much of that energy that we've locked up as possible. So there, there, there really is no way is by saying that if we're going to build a 300-unit townhome development, and just pulled that number completely out of the air, and that developer, we're, we're not going to require, or we can't require that developer to put solar on the roof. That, that does the utility next to no good. If the developer so chooses to put solar panels on the roof and market that to that social group, that's, that's great for the developer, but the expansion of and filling in our community is really being targeted now, especially from the electrical utility perspective, of stabilizing that load. So we don't run into the situation where we're selling so much energy back into the market that we're, we're losing this, we're hemorrhaging money instead of just losing money. Did that come even close to answering your question, Alderman Mayor?
Alderman Mayor, you're on mute still?
It, it explained a lot. I'm not sure that it addressed whether any of the bills had a planning process included in them that had steps towards a more energy-efficient. in them that had steps towards a more energy efficient or carbon-free future.
Alderman Mayor, there are elements within each bill that talks about, and Rich, or Aaron, or Hal, correct me if I'm wrong, a graduated step toward, for example, the path to 100. Both COJA, SEJA, and even the governor's effort talks about that incremental improvement toward more clean energy. Mr. Babaka explained earlier that when we let our contract with Nextera, it is likely, if this council so approves, that we will see nearly a, a potential doubling of renewable energy in the next contract. In fact, getting us to probably that 45%, which is a benchmark in much of the legislation. It still does nothing for the other side of the legislation with respect to carbon, but it does increase the renewable. There are also, and it's no one's surprise here, organizations that are lobbying, our friends in Springfield and elsewhere, for lack of a better word, carve-outs of some certain elements of legislation that allows, for example, a municipality that might have a peaker plant to continue operating that peaker plant until further down the road. Maybe it's to allow Prairie State to operate further down the road. One thing that struck me as unusual is, and this is just me speaking, with the Waste Management Renewable Energy Contract, that's something we should be very proud of, I think. If legislation in Springfield says we can no longer capture that methane to provide 8% of our base load, we still just burn the methane and do nothing with it. It seems kind of contradictory to me. So I think you're going to see a lot of effort, if, I know there's been effort already, to carve out some of those elements. I, I cannot tell you what success has been. My gut tells me they're pretty much quiet on those fronts because of the other issues Anyone object? I'll recognize Alderman Bruno. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if the councils of the opinion, would now be an appropriate time to, to open for public comment, or is there more still coming from the days?
It's, it's certainly up to the committee. If the committee has no additional questions or comments, we will certainly open it up to public comment. Alderman Kilburn?
I just had one other comment here.
Yes, sir.
I think that sometimes people look at NIPA's participants, Geneva, Batavia, and Rochelle, equally impacted. And I think of the three, probably Geneva would be the most greatly impacted as it relates to this legislation. Would you agree with that?
My opinion is, is that we would, we certainly have the greatest exposure now because of the loss of GGF and Waste Management.
Right, those two elements.
And it's because of the loss of the savings for the capacity in the transmission markets that both those facilities bring to our customer base.
So, and I think that's the thing that is, is overlooked in this, is, is that the big impact that shutting down GGF would have in that, if you look at 2004 and what the return on investment has been as it relates to GGF, I think that's, I think that's a testimonial to, to prior councils as to, relates to their vision and the fact that this was a wise investment at the time. If you look at it, we've, we've had about a, an $11 million savings to our customers over the last four years on an $18 million investment. I think that probably, looking back at 2004 and, and the return that it's brought to the community, I think that that was probably a wise choice at that time. Now, whether or not it's going to be a wise choice to continue to operate into the future, Springfield will dictate or allow us, they'll help us in arriving at a decision as it might relate to that. But as it relates to GGF, when do we feel as though it would be fully depreciated? Obviously, it's paid for, but the thing is, the life expectancy of that facility, if it would continue to operate with, with the current level of maintenance, again, we're using it two or three weeks a year. Is it, are we seeing deterioration because of a lack of use, or is it the fact that we have an asset there that is even more valuable because the fact that we're only using it two or three weeks a year to give us that type of a return on the investment?
Well, I think it's an incredibly valuable asset in the fact that last year we paid off the debt.
Right.
Which is actually going to further lower the overall costs of that facility because as part of the operating and capital cost, that, that debt retirement is built into that also.
So if things, if we maintain the status quo, is it realistic to say that, that we could easily expect another 20 years out of that facility?
With, with the level of maintenance and care and analytics and diagnostics that goes into that facility, I think it would be a crying shame to our customer base that if we had to shut that facility down premature 20 years.
Thank you. That, that's all. Thank you.
Of course, if anybody ever wants to go out and see that facility, oh, we're always proud of showing that thing off. It's, it's beautiful inside that facility, just from a public works geek standpoint.
And from an engineering geek standpoint.
The crystal chandeliers are unbelievable.
All Tiffany.
Any additional comments from the committee members, virtual or here in the chamber? Ladies and gentlemen of the public, first, if you don't object, I'm going to ask Stephanie, or excuse me, City Minister Dawkins, if there is anyone on the line, we're going to, first though, how many folks are waiting, do you know?
So, right now, we show 14 online, but only two have their hands raised. But if anybody else would like to speak, they need to raise their hand, there's a hand raise button function. I will say, just for the record, we did have two public comments come by email, one from a Janet Kraft and one from a Rhonda Robinson. And those will both be printed and included in the minutes.
To our friends gathered here in the chamber, we invite you to join us at the podium. We ask that you just please share your name. And I'm going to rely on all you guys to take your appropriate turn, so this gentleman had his hands up first, so, sir, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
Good evening.
My name is Wiley Edmondson. I live with my wife, Mary, on BlackBerry Drive here in Geneva, but I'm not here for us. I'm here for Zoe and Peyton, our five-year-old twin granddaughters, because the real thing that this is all about to me is what kind of world they're going to live in. Now, just to make a big picture point, I have two big takeaways from this meeting, and the first is that I was never smart enough to have been able to work for the Geneva City Electrical Department. But the other big takeaway is that most of the time, most of our power in Geneva comes from coal-fired power plants, which I mentioned parenthetically is a 19th century technology, and this is the 21st century. Depending on when you say the industrial revolution started, what year you pick, the CO2 content of the atmosphere was somewhere between 260 and 280 parts per million. I gave a speech, and it wasn't about the environment or anything, it was actually on the subject of ethics and the importance of telling the truth, but I mentioned climate change denial, and I had call, I had looked it up that morning, and the CO2 content, not that many years ago, was 404 parts per million. It's now 420 parts per million, and the last time our C, the CO2 content of the planet was that high was three and one-half million years ago. So that's where we're, we're at. Now, I know that, I'm just, I'm just a person in, I don't hold an office or anything, in the city of Geneva, and I know that you're the, just the council and mayor of a comparatively small-sized city in the state of Illinois and in the United States. But Garrison Keeler once said, "There's only so much a person can do, but you have to do at least that much." I think it's, in today's climate, wrong for the city to have a policy of obtaining electricity at the lowest rate possible. I think I earned $16,500 a year when our first child was born, and my wife and I went out and bought the very best car seat that we could get. In those days, it was the General Motors car seat. It was like bulletproof. We could have gotten a car seat that cost a quarter that much, but getting a car seat at the lowest possible price would have been wrong. We wanted to protect our kid. The same, same thing is true about Geneva purchasing its electricity. So the best that I could do was to come here and do this. You have to do at least that much, that's how much I can do. As a council, what you can do is passing, is passing a resolution of the council, calling for Illinois to terminate the use of coal-fired power plants by the year 2030, and asking for the money, state and federal, to help Geneva absorb the costs of doing this. The ratepayers who care about their children and their grandchildren care about the world that they're going to live in. We don't have much time. It's like we fell out of, off the top of the John Hancock Building, and we fall past the 50th floor, and somebody says, "How you doing?" And we say, "Okay, so far." We don't have much time. And all these things about bonds and things like that, and the big scale of things, it's not going to matter. So I'm willing to pay more as a ratepayer. I'm willing to pay more in taxes to help mitigate the kind of world that my granddaughter Zoe and Peyton are going to grow up in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go to somebody online real quick, and then you're next, sir, or virtually, excuse me.
Okay, so there was a Carrie Shepherd who had their hand raised through the whole meeting. I don't see them anymore, so I'm going to go to the next individual, which was William Scound. So I am unmuting you, and you can unmute yourself and speak when you are ready.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Scound. Good evening.
Good evening. So as you probably know, I have been working with the Illinois Clean Jobs Coalition. They're the sponsors of SEJA, the Clean Energy and Jobs Bill. This group funded a study by RMI, which is a nonpartisan energy consultancy, that shows that a portfolio of renewable energy resources is both reliable and lower cost than the polluting coal and gas generation by 2030. So if Prairie State is closed by 2030, as several of these bills call for, Geneva, of course, will have to continue to pay the debt service on the bonds that funded the purchase of the plant for another 11 years. However, Geneva will not be required to pay for the annual operating costs of the coal mine and the power plant, and can replace the power that was generated by Prairie State and the capacity that was generated with a renewable portfolio, which includes a number of different sources, wind, solar, storage, efficiency, demand flexibility, that will cost less than continuing to operate the plant. So the point I'd like to make, and because, and let's, I want to talk about Prairie State first, because of course, it's the biggest chunk of our portfolio, is that, you know, regardless of what we do in the future, whether any energy bill passes, whether we continue to operate Prairie State or not, that debt will be, have to be paid. So it's not really a factor in our decision, in the state's decision. It's what's referred to as a sunk cost. It's a cost that's already been incurred, we can't un-incur the cost. So the point is that the real question, when we talk about the coal plant, Prairie State, is how, what is the future cost to continue to run it versus the cost to replace the power and capacity with clean energy? So the RMI study is, been shared, I think, with all of the people on the council. I hope that it was shared with the staff. And we have, I believe, a representative from RMI here this evening, if there are questions, we can get into the detail with you. Now, most comprehensive bills that are the leading candidates to come out in the final bill, call for a transition to all clean energy, the SEJA bill calls for a transition to all clean energy by 2030, and the governor's bill calls to phase out coal by 2030 and gas by 2045. They both phase out nuclear by 2050. So those bills include funding for what they refer to as a just transition, that provides a financial support for the workers and communities that will lose their jobs and tax revenue as the coal and gas generation is phased out. So those fees, those funds for the just transition are funded by a pollution fee, which is also called a carbon fee in a different bill, but basically, those are fees which will be levied on the owners of the coal and gas generations and passed on to ratepayers until those fossil fuel generators are closed by the EPA regulation is part of these bills. We've looked at those bills and the cost of the pollution fees to Geneva's ratepayers during the nine-year transition period, and they come up to about seven tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour for the SEJA bill, slightly more for the governor's bill. For the typical Geneva ratepayer, that equates to about $6 per month of increase during the nine-year transition period. So I, I want to characterize what we think is the correct picture, cost picture, for Geneva ratepayers for closing down Prairie State by 2030. There will be a affordable cost increase during the nine-year transition of about $6 per month for the average ratepayer, or about seven tenths of a cent kilowatt hour for the Prairie State portion of the portfolio. This is a relatively reasonable price to pay for exiting Prairie State, which has lots of long-term liabilities and future costs due to the pollution and the human health hazards that it generates. We want to get off the Prairie State path, which leads to kind of a disastrous future and back onto a clean energy path. Want also to talk about the other generation resources in our portfolio, and let's talk about GGF first, the peaker plant. The peaker plant's nameplate capacity is 30 megawatts. The SEJA bill, and I believe the governor's bill as well, exempts peaker plants of 25 megawatts and below. They are not to be phased out. They are to be, continued to be allowed. So if Geneva wants to stay in the peaker plant business past 2030 or 2045, depending on which date is chosen in the, in the negotiation going on, Geneva could downsize that plant by one of the five turbines to get down to below the 25-megawatt capacity, nameplate The other thing I'd like to point out is that the phase-out of gas, you know, may end up not being 2030, but may end up being 2045 or 2040 or some number in between. So there is life yet to be had from that plant, even if we decided to close it, which would seem to be to be a unnecessary measure to take. which would seem to be a unnecessary measure to take. The plant could simply be downsized. The other large chunk of our portfolio, WMRE, eight and a half percent of our portfolio, the landfill gas portion of the portfolio, also according to the CEJA bill definitions, is a renewable asset. It's a renewable generator. And it would not be closed down under the phase-out of gas. Now, it was mentioned earlier that we currently don't buy the RECs, either for GGF or WMRE. And the current cost of those RECs is, I think it was mentioned, as $3.50 per megawatt. And I think someone asked, "Well, how much is that per kilowatt hour?" And we said, "Well, that's about $0.30 per kilowatt hour." Well, actually, it's only one-tenth of that if you translate $3.50 per megawatt. You know, let's call it $4 per megawatt. That's four tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour. So the cost of acquiring RECs, at least based on the current market prices, for our two quote "green" generation facilities is, at least currently, not all that frightening. And in the future, as a ton of new clean energy generation facilities will be brought online through this regulation, is liable to be lower yet. So the argument I basically would like to make is, as opposed to the picture that the staff has painted tonight, that the clean energy future is unaffordable, it's not. It's not unaffordable. We have a lot of good analysis. We have market trends. And we have opinions from, whether it's the federal government or Lazard or RMI, that show that the cost of clean energy continues to drop like a stone, while the cost of operating coal-fired energy continues to increase and is liable to be extremely expensive as carbon taxes are on the table in a rather immediate threat. So I'd like to ask the staff to reconsider the bleak future that was painted for clean energy costs and take a look at what we have provided you in the mail. And we would be happy to discuss further with you if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, Adam McMillan, resident of Geneva for about 13 years. So I came, I thought we needed a little pep talk, and it's starting to come. I love this Phil Men story here with, "We all have to do our part." And I'm in this business a little bit, and I'll explain in a minute how. But it's a hell of a lot of work. And it's a lot of work for Muni to figure out all by themselves. And I do admire the work that is being put into it. And if we all have to do our part, I guess as a citizen of Geneva and global citizen, I'm asking all of you to please, please do the work. This is the work of our generation, and it's what is really important to our kids and all of our futures. So from my perspective, so I work with commercial buildings. I help design them to be energy-efficient renewables across the whole country. So I have a pretty good perspective of what's happening in different parts of the country. And I will say, what's happening in Illinois is not unique. And it's not the worst if this is seen as a bad thing at all. There are certain cities, certain states that have natural gas bans. And not just electricity, natural gas bans. So no gas heat. So we have to design fully electric buildings, even in cold climates or even in places in California where it's not quite so cold, it's a little bit easier. But this is the reality. There's climate emergencies where you don't get 10 or 15 years of transition. This is the legislation now, and we're going to do it. And there's a lot to work through. But I think that the RMI stuff that Bill mentioned, I think some of that's being thought of. And again, it's a lot of work, but we need to do it. And so as I work with these building owners and we talk to these cities, some of them just say, "Well, we'll just see what happens. And we're just going to come with it as it goes." Others will say, "Look, carbon is a liability on our books. It's a threat to our business." So I work with large industrials that look at this. They look at the legislation. They look at the administration. They look at just the youth and their passion on this topic. And that is a threat to their business. So they are taking hold and saying, "Look, there are incentives out there. There are processes. There are programs that are going to be rolling out here. And we're going to go get them before everyone else gets them so that we can input our infrastructure in a place that we're competitive going forward." And these individual businesses will do this, and their cities are trying to attract businesses that want to think like-minded like that. And I think we've heard today through all the discussion, I mean, carbon, I mean, no one did anything wrong. We made the best decisions we could with what we had when we got our agreements. But the reality is, today, carbon is a liability. If all five of those bills went away and we had four more years to wait, I'm not comfortable sitting here saying, "Well, we'll deal with it four years later now." If there's some advantage that we can take of right now to make Geneva more competitive and help our kids, our families, our youth, show them that we can show leadership in this issue, I think it's really, really important that we do it. And beyond climate and all the displacement with that, there's also public health issues here to think about as well. So I would think that there's really three risk factors that when I think about this, and I'd like you to consider for this. So the first one is, because there's risks, I guess there's risk in restructuring, right? There's risk to do this and take action on it. But these are the reasons why I think it's not, it was important to not act at all. So risk number one, get left behind in the rest of the country. As Bill mentioned, renewables are getting cheaper and cheaper. We're still locking this thing to 2041. There's going to be emission plant cleanups. This thing was $90 billion over budget when it was built. There's more capital projects that are planned. I'm not an expert in what that costs, but I just know, it seems that it's going to cost more money. Renewables continue to fall. The incentive structures around renewables are probably here for a short period of time until they become commonplace, then they go away. So waiting could cost you money if we transition late. And personally, I'm just not comfortable living in a town where I'm stuck with coal as my primary option for the next 30 years. So if this bill, if these bills offer residents choice and power, where I could go into community solar contract with the city or I could get my solar power from somewhere else, that's an opportunity I think I would like to have as a resident of Geneva. The second is economic opportunity. So right now, out in DeKalb, right off Route 88, Facebook is building a huge data center. And the reason they plugged into that, from what I read, is because there's a wind farm right next to it. And they put the data center there because renewable energy is here. And all those jobs are here. Now, building that facility is here, and the people that are employed will be here. There's a huge opportunity from being a town that attracts businesses like that. And also the residents. I think residents want to come and play. And Geneva does great in terms of being a very environmentally friendly community. We do a lot with the natural environment. And I think putting a progressive renewable policy in place, clean energy in place, will only help attract more residents that are, they are more discerning on where they live based on these factors. And it'll position us, again, for more jobs in the future. And then the last one, too, I'll speak to a moral imperative. We have the coal plant, but the coal plant's not sitting outside of Geneva. And it's generally not sitting outside of the towns that use the power. And some of that's due to the cheaper land. But some of that's also because it is dirty and it is pollution. So I feel like to a certain part of me, I'll speak for myself, that anytime that I use extra power here, I'm flipping a switch that's causing pollution somewhere else that could be making other people less healthy. And I think that as a city of Geneva, what can we do for our brethren and for the people around us? I think this is another opportunity to think about that as well. So I think it's not all doom and gloom. I do think this is the work of our generation. And I'm just asking that you all really strongly consider your role in this. And I'll, my role, I feel like, is to be able to work with these building owners because we can transition these buildings and these cities to meet these mandates. And then we can keep it moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Anyone else, Stephanie?
So next, I am unmuting Reverend Scott Hall. If you're still there and would like to speak, please unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Brilliant, thank you. I am the Reverend Scott Hall. My family and I moved to Batavia this past year because of my new job as the pastor at the Unitarian Universalist Church here in Geneva. First, I just want to say thank you to the board and everyone here tonight. And as a new resident of the Tri-Cities, I am deeply encouraged. There are so many good people, so many earnest people willing to take up this critical work of creating a sustainable future. So tonight, I'm going to speak to you as a local, as a parent, and as a faithful leader. And I get the pleasure of echoing so many amazing residents that have spoken before me. So thank you to all of them, too. Now, I'm going to ask you to support our transition from carbon-based energy and specifically the plans to, all the plans that lead to the closure of Prairie State. A colleague of mine, Reverend Dr. Carl Gregg, once told me that we are saved from perfection. It's kind of funny to say that out loud, but the point is, no one's perfect. We are all on a journey from complete ignorance to at least some measure of knowing. There is no fault and no blame for not knowing everything. But as the poet Maya Angelou once said, "When we know better, we do better." Years ago, when we were facing increasing energy costs, we made some bets on carbon energy. We've talked about that tonight. We made a big bet on Prairie State. With what we knew then, we made the best guess that we could with the information that we had, just like that last commenter just said. We couldn't know that energy costs would change. We couldn't know that Prairie State was a bad bet. It's pretty clear, we know it now, though. The Chicago Tribune knows it. This January, it said, quote, "The Prairie State Plant is an economic boondoggle," end quote. We know that coal and other fossil fuels are not our future. We can argue the details and the timing, but we know this. Our world is changing, and the science is quite clear. We need to make some big changes, and we need to figure out how to make them right now. I get the concerns about liability. I get the concerns about reliability. I get that we want costs to be as low as possible. Talking to the average resident, for the sake of the argument, that's our church. With closure plans, we expect that we will be paying more in years ahead. And like many local businesses and churches, we are not careless about rising costs. That matters. But saving money is not all that matters. There are larger concerns, and we have more important obligations. We know that Prairie State is putting out an enormous amount of pollution, not in the future, but right now. Top 10 in our country. Our coal plant is putting over 1 million tons of carbon per month into the air. Our coal plant. I can't believe it's 2021 and I'm saying this. Our coal plant. Our coal plant is putting enough pollution into the air that if we close it, we might save the lives of 50 Illinois residents every year. That is, we can save the lives of neighbors, friends, family members, taxpayers, 50 Illinois citizens every single year who die due to pollution. Pollution tied to Prairie State. Our coal plant. I brought my kids here to the Fox River Valley area. We love it here. And I want to tell them that the leaders of their new community care enough, are humble enough, are brave enough to say, "A mistake was made, but we are going to fix it." Because we all make mistakes. We are not perfect, after all. That's just be, part of being human. But we can also choose. We can choose to fix those mistakes, choose to make the hard choices, when it's important. And the lives of our neighbors are important. The health of our environment is important. The future is important. We know better now. And when we know better, we must do better. Now, I'm closing up here. But your voices on this council matter. We know that the neighboring councils are watching us tonight. What position we take here, what we discuss here, matters. So let me echo what I've heard the council say tonight. What we must do today is tell our state legislators that whatever plan they eventually adopt, that plan must help us here in Geneva and help the rest of the state make the transition from fossil fuels in a timely and affordable manner. Because we must find ways forward for a just, a moral, and a healthy future for our residents, our kids, our businesses, for all of us. We can drag our feet about the details, but the fact is, we are running out of time. We must do better now. The right thing, the moral thing, the smart thing to do is act now. So thank you for your time, for your attention, and for your continued leadership for our beautiful little town. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Hall. Anyone in the audience who wish to speak next, feel free. Yes, sir. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here. This is going to be the beginning of a new day. I think we're finding out we're behind the curve, way behind the curve. Climate change isn't something new. It's been around for at least 50 years of study, intense study. And the last 20 years of active action of trying to get people to wake up and realize what it means. We live with environmental privilege, so we really don't see what's happening here. I tell people, "We have no melting polar bears here." We don't know anything about that. But we do have stuff like this happening. Apparently, the entire rest of the world is aware of climate change and asking for something to be done. And this is where it turns up in places like this. So it comes down to us deciding, "What are we going to do with not just Prairie State, but with our whole power supply thing?" So I saw two things happening tonight. One is we're going to have a lot of learning to do after tonight. This could be like the beginning of six months or a year studying, "How do we get our power? Where's our power come from? What is NMPA? Who owns that? What are the bonds and the contracts? Are they different? Are they the same thing?" I hear this frequently, that our contracts are nested in our bonds. One of the three bonds, one of them, two of them, all three of them? Are their contracts outside the bonds? There's a lot going on here, on the financial aspects and on the physical aspects of just making the power itself. You've got Prairie State supplying power. You've got the gas plant. You've got the mountain out there. These are all different kinds of things happening. There's like way too much to deal with in one night. So lots of learning to do. I'm going to take a segue for a moment because I'm going to forget it if I don't. I want to thank Mr. Babica for having touted the energy efficiencies that were happening. Because out of all of the climate change talk you ever hear about, number one is energy efficiency. It's cheap, free, and completely reliable. It's an awesome thing, energy efficiency. And it's so boring. I don't think anybody wants to pay any attention to it. It's a huge part of the Clean Energy Jobs Act, which will probably have savings in gas efficiencies for insulation and house and stuff that runs through the hundreds of millions of dollars. But it doesn't get touted so much because mostly we're concerned about what's happening now and what's going to change. And what we have happening is our current carbon supply infrastructure is going to get shifted faster than we had anticipated when we wrote out our original asset and liability statements and lifetime projects for these things. And it's going to come to an end sooner than we expected. What wasn't mentioned here tonight is we didn't have too many advocates here specifically for clean energy. Understandably, nobody's on the payroll. It's like the government. We don't have anybody in the peace department. Consequently, when they have a big conversation, who's there to talk about peace? The people who are in charge of the war. So you get the slanted perspective of what's going on. So we got a little bit of that tonight. I've got no complaints with our energy department here. Our public works, they seem to be extremely professional and competent. I'm awed and amazed at how much stuff they are able to know and deal with and do. It's a wonderful thing. But it's not part of their job to incorporate clean energy into their operations. And I believe Amy had asked them once, "Is there a plan to transition here somewhere?" And there was, there's no plan. There's no plan from Prairie State. There's no request from our council, from other councils. It's like nobody had thought of it yet. It's like, climate change, something brand new? Is the fact that we'll have to actually do something about climate change? Is that brand new? Well, here we are tonight. So, here we are tonight. Why are we here tonight? Turns out, there's legislation that's going to make a major impact on our assets. But it's going to happen, and it's going to happen fast. And we're late to the game. We're never going to figure this out. What all our assets are, what all our options should be, what would be the best for us? But I believe Mayor Burns had mentioned, they're in conversation with all of the various parties involved to see that you can do this in a way that won't harm us. So if we can clarify your requests, there's a good chance that they will respond positively and try to do it in a way that doesn't kill you. There's nobody in any one of those half dozen bills that says what we really want to do is smash small towns. It's not in there anywhere. They too want to see clean energy happen. They too want to see it be successful. They too want towns to thrive. They're not going to kill off their own tax base. So when you tell them, "We're a special group." Can we find and identify all the municipal utilities and make some arrangements here so as we go to clean energy, we don't kill us in the process? And identify specifically what you want, whether there's some extension regarding on your peaker plant or on the hill, or whatever else you had identified as an essential thing that's going to be attacked if the carbon pricing goes up, as it might? Because the option is, we're going to fail to pass a clean energy bill that shuts down Prairie State. What was not discussed tonight was the liability of being a coal plant owner for the next 40 years. The moral hazard is there. It's going to be like tobacco and drugs. It's going to be taxed, a little bit at first, more later. And it's a monopoly, and tax isn't going anywhere. That's not going to drive them out of business. We're going to pay those taxes. So, carbon tax is going up. Some people default to, "Well, carbon capture and storage will save us from that." And I have to segue here, because I'm personally a big fan of carbon capture and storage. It's essential, we need it. The IPC said, "It's like one-third of everything we're going to do to save the world." The other third is our famous energy efficiencies. And it's only the last third that's clean energy. So it's a huge shift in the way we're doing things. It's going to have to come about. But carbon capture and storage, as essential as it is, is not going to be cheap. The International Energy Agency published a report last month comparing about 25 different applications for carbon capture and storage, one of which was power plants. And there, they thought, "It's getting to be affordable. It's looking good." The price range is $40 to $60 a ton, about five to 10 times what any of the prices are in any of the current legislation. So carbon capture and storage, while essential, needed in vast quantities, is not a, is not going to be a moneymaker for us. It's going to be needed to save carbon dioxide. So just to be sure, we don't underestimate these kind of costs, we're also building a coal ash pit down there, which I think at the end of 40 years will be about 50 feet tall and cover 700 acres. And if you remember, the Tennessee Kingston Plant that went boom in 2008, that was a billion dollars in damage. They've got lawsuits continuing up to a couple of years ago, still criminal lawsuits 13 years later. The liability of owning that coal ash pit for four decades is something to think about when we pass on to our future council is, what are we doing? You've got lots of liability from inaction. So hopefully, we can shut down Prairie State, the sooner the better. If it can be done reliably, and it can be done safely, and it can be done in a way that doesn't harm our communities, I think you should ask your elected representatives to support this legislation with some way to help you out. And I think that threads the needle between having to live with Prairie State forever and having it all shut down on your heads. So you don't have any time left. I believe the legislators now are speaking for a few more days this week on clean energy legislation. And then they want to go into the rest of the stuff, budgets and, uh, redistricting, things like that. So after Friday, it's going to be a lot harder to get any of these major pieces through. So I'm hoping Mayor Burns can get through to his contacts and let them know that, uh, the council would express something tonight along the lines of, "We're in favor of shutting Prairie State with some protections for us." It's not a lot to ask, it's a simple request. But if you can get that in there, and maybe have to get some clarity about specifically what it is, you might find the best of both worlds. And then it'll be next week, and we'll get back to what I started with, the long-term study. How do we get our power? What are we doing with all our plants? All of the rest, we're going to have to learn about energy that, up until now, we just assumed the professionals in our staff would handle for us, as they have. But they didn't get the guidance from us to move to clean energy. So that's what we need for tonight, the long-term view to move to clean energy. I think that's about it. Anybody want me to go on for some more?
And just for the record, Mr. Kehl?
Yes, sir.
K O E H L?
It's spelled K O E H L, it's pronounced Kehl. And I'm Bill Kehl, I'm from Geneva, Illinois.
Of course, yeah.
Lived here five years with my grandchildren and my daughter and son-in-law. Love the town, love the people. It's a wonderful place.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Anyone online, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, next, I'd like to recognize Kevin Brem. You are now unmuted.
Hi, this is Kevin Brem. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Yeah, again, my name's Kevin Brem. I'm a manager in the electricity practice at RMI. I'm one of the authors of the report that was mentioned earlier. If you're not familiar with RMI, we're Clean Energy Not-for-Profit. We have offices in several cities across the United States and based out of Colorado. Our work and my work, it's split between, uh, doing research on the clean energy transition, working with and alongside clean energy advocates, and working with and alongside communities and electric utilities who hire us to help them think through and deal with some of these challenges that are coming in this rapidly changing policy and technology landscape. So with that, I, uh, I wanted to mention, and it was mentioned previously, we did complete an analysis specifically, actually, before I go into that, I did want to recognize, I've had a chance to join a lot of meetings from electric cooperatives, from municipal utilities. I was really impressed by the conversation I've heard. And I think everything I've heard was, uh, you know, from staff was very professionally well-presented. So kudos to you all on that. I, I wanted to mention again that we did put out an analysis called, uh, called, um, let me get the name right, uh, Transition Opportunities for Prairie State Energy Campus. I encourage you to have a look at that or to reach out to me if you have any questions about that. I, I'm not going to go through all the findings, but I did want to mention just a couple of points that kind of stood out to me from the conversation today. Emphasizing a couple of points and one thing that was missing. So I think we, we've heard about the concerns about the environment from the coal plant. We've also heard about the concerns for the environment from the community writ large, including the Public Works Department. Prowess, closing Prairie State is by far the largest impact you can have within your purview as, as a city. And I know it's not something that's directly within your purview. It's a lot more complicated than that. But our report found that the emissions from the coal plant each year are the equivalent to 2.7 million cars. 2.7 million cars, just to give sort of an order of magnitude of the amount of emissions coming from that. The, the one point that I wanted to touch on, that I think was maybe missing from the conversation as we're thinking about the impacts and the economics, is that from when the time the plant was first contemplated to now, and furthermore to 2030, we are in the midst of a massive shift in technologies. A massive shift in technologies. And just to give you a sense, when the plant was initially contemplated, coal was the dominant power source on the US electric grid. From around, from the past decade, we've seen nearly a 50% decline in the amount of coal consumed. Last year in 2020, the amount of coal consumed was less than it was in any year since 1905. That's the amount of total coal consumed in the country. So what we're seeing is either coal is in a gradual decline, or it's a full-on tailspin. So we're seeing a massive decrease in coal. At the same time, we're seeing a massive decrease in the cost of renewable energy. Again, if you think back to the time when this coal plant was initially contemplated, to buy solar would have probably cost $200 or $150 per megawatt hour. Now, you can get wind or solar. In the state of Illinois, you can build, own, and operate those resources for similar prices to what it would cost to just operate this coal plant. Uh, Councilwoman Mayor asked the question earlier about, would someone buy out your contract from this? And I think in theory, if, if things, if the technology hadn't changed, when you got to 2030 and you had, you know, say, $90 million, 50, I can't remember the exact figure, say it's $75 million in debt, if the technology hadn't changed and the policy hasn't, hadn't changed, probably somebody would have bought your portion of the plant for around $75 million. No one would buy that from you. There's a coal plant called Coal Creek Station up in North Dakota owned by Great River Energy Cooperative. And the state of North Dakota was shopping around to try to find anyone who would buy it for a dollar. That's just sort of reflecting on the shift we've seen in the technology. So I'd encourage you, when you think about the cost of paying that debt down over time, that is a sunk cost, that's a significant cost. But that's not to say, even that if the coal plant weren't mandated to be shut down, that it would be operating long beyond 2030. We're seeing the technologies and the policies changing in such a significant way. Let's see, I, I think those are the couple of points I wanted to mention. The other thing that I've heard, and I just wanted to encourage you to continue to do and applaud is, as we work with utilities in this work, we realize that there's a few things that utilities do and do well, and it's totally non-negotiable moving forward. Keeping rates low is non-negotiable. Your community relies on you for that. Keeping fully reliable power is non-negotiable. We are fortunate that we are seeing a rapid change in technology that is enabling some of these changes to take place and still keep the lights on, still keep rates low. But we also recognize that this is a big change that we're not asking you to do over decades, but very rapidly. Uh, I encourage you to continue to engage with policy and to engage in policy in a way that's not opposing to the change, but as has been said, finding ways to make it work for yourselves. And, and just as one, uh, you know, final anecdote that I can share, I'm out here in Colorado, and there's a big, uh, electric cooperative called Tri-State. Until recently, they got a lot of flak for their reliance on coal. They got a lot of pushback for their unwillingness to embrace environmental change. In recent weeks, we've seen them take flak now from the Industry Organization for Electric Cooperatives, because they, Tri-State, are going to lobby to Washington to find policies that will help them transition away from coal and help them deal with their federal stranded debt, or with, with their debt associated with those coal plants. So I think that's just one example, but I think the stance that your community seems to be taking about, not how can we fight to maintain the status quo? But how can we use policy and how can we help shape policy so that we can get what our community wants, which is clean power at low rates with high reliability? So I, again, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to, uh, further discuss with any of you all. You can find the report online, um, and my contact information's in there.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Macra, did you want to, did you have your hand up, or anyone else online? Okay. Then after that, then we'll go to Billy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edith Macra, and I am not a resident of Geneva, but love the town. I am the Environment Director for the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and I have the pleasure of working with Mayor Kevin Burns, who chairs our Environment Committee and Energy Subcommittee. And I just wanted to say a couple of things, just to put things in context, and then to support you as you work through these really difficult decisions and solutions. First off, I just wanted to compliment all of you, the City Council, the staff, Mayor Burns, and the residents for being as educated and passionate and involved in this very complex issue. I am hanging on by a thread, and this is my day job, is to work in, in energy policy. So I really encourage you to continue to talk amongst yourselves and to listen to the experts and engage the residents in finding a solution. I know how difficult and challenging it is. I also wanted to underscore what Mr. Babica and Mr. Burns and other councilmen have said about commitment to green or sustainability and goals. And just to put that in context a little bit, so Geneva is one of the early adopters to the Greenest Region Compact, which is the largest sustainability collaborative for municipalities in the US. And we set out, um, common goals that all of the municipalities could embrace and set those goals into motion, including clean energy targets. From that, we were able to leverage our very large collaborative, and Mayor Burns has been working in a volunteer capacity for 18 months on a regional climate action plan. This is only one of four in the US. And what we did through a very deep dive in working collaboratively with NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Agency, as well as CMAP, we've had 170 partner organizations work, work with us to look at decarbonizing across the board. So while decarbonizing the power sector is very important, it's very complicated. Most municipalities don't have the energy expertise you do by being a muni-electric. Most of them are dependent on, on the utilities. So decarbonizing electricity is challenging, but there are opportunities. And to this gentleman who quoted Garrison Keillor, who's one of my favorites, in saying, "You can only do what you can do," the climate action plan that we're looking at in this decarbonizing speaks directly to that. So municipalities can't do everything, but we're tailored in, in this regional climate action plan to look at what municipalities can do. And the energy legislation that is being discussed has many other decarbonizing strategies that play more to municipal strengths. And I, I certainly, we've worked collaboratively at the Mayor's Caucus, and those components which weren't mentioned, um, by other commenters include electrification of transportation or supporting electric vehicles. Mayor's Caucus has been very supportive of that. That's part of the regional climate action plan. Energy codes, we found that to be an area of particular municipal strengths. Mayor Burns testified before the International Codes Council, where we found this was an area that municipalities can have a tremendous impact on energy efficiency and, and clean buildings. The energy legislation, including CIGIA and the Climate, Consumer and Climate Plan, I'll focus on supporting the Renewable Portfolio Standard for Distributed Generation for Solar. That's another area that municipalities across the board have had some good success and real support for. And then, of course, uh, energy efficiency, which was mentioned. And a very important component of all of these bills are equity. And these are all really important components to a sustainable, clean future for clean energy as well as for sustainable communities. So again, I just want to applaud you for working together, struggling through the 2,066 pages of legislation and, and trying to find the best solution. If we can be supportive at the Mayor's Caucus, we work collaboratively. The Energy Subcommittee is hearing from proponents of the bills to make recommendations and to look at where some of the bills overlap, and then to try to come up with some, uh, common recommendations or observa, observations from these bills that can support all municipalities. So again, just Godspeed to you, good luck, and thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. All set?
Uh, next online, we have Maureen McKeo. So I am unmuting you now. Obviously, I'm not Irish.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Good evening.
Good evening. There's been a lot said tonight about the complications of the issues and the multiplicity of facts involved in 2,000 pages and so on. And I wanted to suggest that faced with those kinds of things, and also with deadlines, clinging to or referring to some basic principles or basic beliefs isn't, makes such a decision much easier. And I wanted to ask you to consider two things that may have become second nature and should not be. And that refers to cost. There's been much said tonight about the cost of certain actions and the cost of renewables, the cost of coal, et cetera. And I think we are, I hope we are getting close to the point where we will question whether saving consumers money and cheapening things is in our best interests. I think over the past 25 years or so, it has become almost a principle. It's, in fact, it has become one of the things that defies antitrust, as long as you're urging to reduce cost to consumer, any merger is good. Well, we're not going to talk about that, but I want to talk about the cost in, the error sometimes in considering cost from two perspectives, very briefly. One is, the only cost we think of... One is, the only costs we think of are dollar costs. We have not costed the price to the environment of what we've been doing, and it's not considered. And if it were considered, we're paying a terrible cost for our energy. So I'd ask you to think about that. The second way in which it seems to me it's very important to think about cost is why and how has it become a mantra that we must save consumers money? We probably don't pay what we should pay for many of the things we consume, including water, power, and probably our food. So perhaps it's time that we thought about what is a reasonable cost that I can turn a switch on in my house and have light, that I can press a button and wash dishes? There, those are very valuable things, and I should be paying for their value. I think at the same time, we should protect those who cannot afford to pay by some sliding fee scale or something like that. But most of us, many of us living in Geneva, can afford to pay more for our energy, and we should be paying it. So I would ask you to think about those things as you think about this decision you're making. And finally, I've heard everyone say they're in favor of renewable energy and ready to tell Springfield they are, but it always, there's an unspoken but. We're all in favor of renewable energy, but we don't want it to hurt. We don't want to have to pay for past mistakes. We, we want to keep the status quo as far as our budget and our family budget, but do give us renewable energy, and then we'll be all for it. I would say you could go further. You could say we are in favor of renewable energy even though we know it will cost. And yes, we wish some protection, but the, the citizens of Geneva, for the most part, can afford to pay for healthy energy, for clean energy, and we should be willing to do so. And it may require a sales pitch, but I know that you're up for that. So thank you very much, and good luck, and thank you for the service that you perform.
Thank you, Ms. McKeo. Billy? Sorry about the delay, man.
Good evening, everyone. Billy Malachi, 121 Woodlawn Street. I'm also on the Strategic Advisory, the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. A lot of the things that have been said tonight are things that I had questions about. They've been answered, and points have been repeated and reiterated. So I'm here, at a personal level, I'm always interested in this because, you know, I consider myself a, you know, a tree hugger, always have been, always will be. It's a badge I wear with honor, and I love the term. So anyway, I am also glad that members of city council and city staff have also been talking about how they're in favor of renewable energy. This was an informational session, basically for everybody on city council to receive information from Director Babica, and also to, to voice information to, to the public and our elected officials in Springfield, how things may affect us with certain legislation that's being passed. I guess I just wanted to sort of stress on, on the point that, that we as a municipality can do little things in the, in the interim about what we can do as far as keeping up with the times, because as Mr. Kail, you know, mentioned, climate change is happening, it's on the horizon, change of technology is coming, whether we're going to be ready for it or not. But I think that it's a good thing for us to keep in mind that the little things we can do as far as a municipality are making sure that we, you know, stay up to date with the most, you know, current, you know, building codes and energy codes. As I said, a third of the cost is, you know, that, you know, is energy efficiency, and make sure that our new buildings, possibly our existing buildings, get updated. Work on our solar program better, I think, is a municipality could be done for our residents. We only have, I don't even know if it's a dozen of our homes have solar technology on their roofs right now. You know, we can get up to 5% of the, of the residents, I believe, with net metering. Maybe hold more informational sessions on how that can happen, maybe possibly incentivize things, you know, something as simple as like waiving permit fees through the city when it comes to putting solar on roofs. Just the little things, I think that whether or not things happen in Springfield, which it sounds like they're going to, and how they're going to affect us, you know, that's somewhat in our control, it's somewhat out of our control. But the things that are in control as a municipality, I think that I'd like to see us, just as a, as a town, do a little bit better and, and be more proactive with this, with this issue, rather than taking that wait-and-see approach. Because if, if we do a better job now, then, you know, we do have that, you know, we have our own peaker plant in our back pocket if we need be, but, you know, we might be able to do a better job where we don't have to turn it on and off. And just, and, you know, that's a little bit of a savings there. So that's all I had to add. So I was here for the, for the long haul, so I figured I'd get up and, and say something. So thank you all, congratulations on everybody on your elections as well this, this spring.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's three minutes to 10 o'clock. Is there a motion to continue this discussion beyond 10 o'clock? We do have one more person online. Does anyone object to continue this meeting past 10 o'clock? Anyone remotely? I see none. Anyone here in the chamber? I see and sense none. We'll continue.
Jean Pierce, you are now unmuted and free to speak.
Thank you. I am Jean Pierce, resident of Geneva. I believe that there is strong support for renewable energy in our town. I believe far more people tried to submit email messages than just the two that you actually received. When I tried to submit one, I was given the message that Peter Collins was out of his office until May 13th. So I'm sorry that you did not get the messages that were sent. Prairie State is using dirty coal. We have a responsibility, not just to save money, we have a responsibility to save our planet, to help workers transition, to stop polluting the air and water of people living near Prairie State. I urge you to carefully read the RMI report. They have much to say about the rest of the story. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Just for the record, I believe your email was sent to administration as opposed to, quote, "public comment," but we are in receipt of your email, and we, and it has been posted to the website.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone care to comment on the comfortable chairs we provided? Anyone else online?
There's no one else raising their hand. If anyone else wanted to speak, they need to raise their hand now, otherwise, that's it.
Before I recognize Mr. Kail for a second time, I'm just going to give just a few seconds here, Bill, for...
Yeah, this'll be brief, no lecture this time. I'm Bill Kail again, from Geneva still. I don't know if it's possible for the council to express consideration tonight, so that others listening will know if you in fact are in favor of pursuing clean energy legislation with protections for the community, or if you intend to pursue it next week.
I think that would be, it would be inconsistent with the opening statement that no action would be taken tonight.
It would be.
Yes, sir.
It would be a big step.
Nope.
To make inconsistency happen, but I, I ask.
Oh, I knew you would.
So I'm not going to shy away from that.
I don't know.
But so it's something, just to be aware of, that we're walking away from tonight if this opportunity dissipates in front of us. So hopefully, I don't know how you guys get together during the week. Can you only meet at a meeting?
No, we are only allowed to meet with no more than three aldermen at a time, or myself and two aldermen at a time. We do not have private meetings, discourse, what have you, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
So if there's any comment among council as to what this means now, that we're close to running out of time.
I think that the purpose of tonight was to, was to not only bring ourselves up to speed, all of us in this room, and perhaps even Alderman Mayor, who I know you've been attentive over the years with respect to council meetings. It was only 14 or so months ago when we had a presentation by then Superintendent, oops, shouldn't say then, by Superintendent Hal Wright regarding our operations. Much of this evening's presentation was kind of a, a, what's the word? A refresher, but in light of the legislation perking, percolating in Springfield, we thought it best to marry the two. I believe strongly that what we heard here this evening is that there's not one council member, there's not, that I know of, one community member who doesn't see the transition to renewable energy as inevitable. And I circled that word inevitable as well. The question is, as Mr. Babica indicated and others, is how do we get there? How do we communicate that message to our legislators? And how do we keep watch on all that is happening in Springfield at the time?
So do you have any answers to that now? Is there a plan to meet next week to do this, or will it show, when will it show up again?
It'll be taken under advisement. We do have a scheduled council meeting on the 17th regarding some other matters, but I can assure you of this, that between now and then, there'll be numerous conversations taking place with and between myself and legislatures. You heard Ms. McCrae mention that on February 12th, or excuse me, on the 12th, this Wednesday, I, Edith, and others are hosting a Zoom presentation for all authors of all six legislative initiatives, for them to, quote, "present to us what those initiatives contain for the benefit of not just me, but other elected officials throughout the region." So we continue to do all that good work, and of course, we consult regularly with our friends in other communities.
Is that open to the public?
It's open for elected officials.
Only elected officials?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this before next week? It's in the middle of the week?
It's on Wednesday the 12th. It's similar to the meeting I attended for DuPage that opened it up to all elected officials and others.
What I'm trying to get at is, we're running out of time. Have you got time? Have you got that calendar happening in your head?
I think there lies the debate. There lies the debate. I don't, I, time has been defined differently by different people.
Absolutely.
We've been advised, and I know you have as well, that we've heard two stories. It's unlikely anything will move by the end of the month, it'll likely be pushed to the fall. It's, if anything moves by the end of the month, it's likely to do so not bicameral, but by one, either the House or the Senate. Still has to go to the other chamber. Again, I think we're at a disadvantage because I simply can't read the minds of the legislatures.
So if it does...
I've spoken to a couple here who have told me point blank, on both sides of the aisle, that there's a lot of scurrying going about, quote, "people are talking to each other," but because it's, it's such a big issue, that people are afraid to make missteps prematurely, whatever that means. I don't know what that means. So, because they know that the eyes of all municipalities are, are on them as well, and of course, our voices are in their ears, so.
So if it goes to the fall, I'd like to put a motion that this gets on the agenda as a regular basis to discuss this, so in that time, we're fully informed and able to make some more, better decisions about the distinction between our bonds and our contracts and our power supplies.
And I, you know, I have absolutely no objection to that. I can't imagine anyone here is as well. I would like to broaden that horizon as well. I've had the opportunity and the pleasure of working with the Illinois Cleans Jobs Coalition, with the Climate Table, the men and women, with corporations, industry, foundations throughout the state of Illinois regarding these issues. And I think you would probably agree, as would everybody in this audience. It's, it's, it's like, it's like finding a one-handed economist, while on the one hand, yet on the other. And I'm hearing that on the one hand, yet on the other, constantly. I don't want anyone to walk out of this room assuming that we're just waiting to see what happens, because we are engaged. We are engaged as best we can be. I know that Rich, and Aaron, and Hal, and their team are engaged regularly, not just, or excuse me, not advocating a particular position, but keeping an eye on what is happening and how these bills are moving. So, and you know how to get ahold of them.
Hopefully, it, it works out for the best. So this was a bit of an opportunity for us.
Good.
I'm concerned that the, at some point in the future, the state might say it made a mistake in shutting them down and just let it run, and we're going to live with the liability of Prairie, Prairie State for decades. So hopefully, it doesn't come to that. On with the calendar. Good luck, everybody. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. Good to see you. Alderman Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I, for one, feel a, a pretty distinct sense of urgency to make even a broad, general statement. I, I'll respect the, the wish of the chair, do not formally present that, but I trust in your dealings with, with your committees, that you will clearly communicate what seems clear consensus by the council as to our position and with broad language to address our particular vulnerabilities with regards to our carbon commitments. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. And on the heels of that, I too feel that we, this is way too important to assume that people are listening and remembering, and like you said, everyone is scattered, there's lots of moving parts. I think it's extremely important to formally define our position on this in writing. That's a, a basic rule of life, and I, I think this definitely meets the criteria that we've, we've got to put it in writing, define, define what we're supporting and what we're looking for. And it can be vague, it just needs to be formally stated, officially stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderwoman Burghart?
Yes, I, I just wanted to back up Alderman Ruby, that I agree with her. I'd like to see us make a statement as a council. I know we can't take an action tonight, but perhaps we do need to have some discussions among ourselves, you know, in our, in our, we can't have conversations as long as we're small groups, to figure out what kind of language we could all get behind, so that we're weighing in on this issue and not just being dragged along by the, by the tide. It's, it's a tough one, it's certainly very complex. I was, you know, I got to go down to Prairie State when I first got elected and, and see the mine down there and the, and the plant, and it's, it's a pretty awe-inspiring operation there. It's, it's also kind of awe-inspiring how much work, I, I always say what I was like, walked away from was how much work and how much energy goes into a coal plant and coal mine and just keeping people alive that are pulling the coal out. It's a, it is a very inefficient and way to power our lives, because it was, it's just a kind of still, you know, in some ways, technology was amazing, but in some ways, I felt like I could have been in the, you know, the 1890s or something. Anyway, I'm glad we had this conversation tonight. I know we're all tired and worn out, it's, it's a tough one, but I do hope we don't let the moment pass without trying to move forward in some way on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any new business, dare I ask? Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's special committee of the whole meeting?
So moved.
Alderman Marx, Beatty, and Punch, Alderman Cavan? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Dawkins.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Burghart, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Cosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Be safe driving home.